And I am going to start the notes. All right, bet. So let's get rolling. Welcome to the second town hall meeting for the Aboriginal Republic North of North America Ministerial Congress. We have some of our chief ministers on the call today. And we are excited to give you all pretty much this update of what has been going on over the time period of since we've had the last meeting, but also just over this time period of us within the position and some of the work that we've been doing. And some of the things that have transpired within the tribe that we would like to give our perspective on. And make sure that we're keeping our nationals in alignment with handling conflict, etc. It's also an opportunity for you all to discuss things or questions that you may have. And we have various professionals on this line ranging from jurors to doctors. Down to some birth workers now that are finishing up in their class. Congratulations to them as well. And we have some great people even doing wonderful work within their own professions and jurisdictions, right? So this is your opportunity to build with nationals across the nation. See what is going on, update us with your events, be part of the family. So we look forward to having participate from our nationals. And at some point, we'll also have some conversations around prospects and what that looks like as well. But again, welcome to everybody coming in and we are going to start with the preamble. Do one of the ministers want to start us off with the preamble or I can, but I do want to give us an opportunity.
I'll go ahead.
All right. Thank you, brother. I will yield the floor to you.
Okay. We, the people of the Aboriginal Republic of North America asserting our natural Aboriginal rights as the oldest recorded Aboriginal indigenous peoples of the Americas consisting of an Aboriginal Union of Indigenous People living in accord with natural law, the law of our ancestors, do hereby recognize all nationals of the Aboriginal Republic of North America as unified community. Establish our divine right to self-rule. A common defense of our nation. A complete unified will for progress and prosperity by and for our people. Establishing justice by way of natural law and equality and complete autonomy as a nation. One nationality, one aim, one destiny.
All right. Thank you, brother. And again, could you just help me out with admitting people in as I'm like switching from the screens and all of that?
Okay, got you.
Appreciate you, God. All right, I am gonna go ahead and start sharing my screen. Can y'all see my screen, fam?
Yes.
All right. So here's the agenda for today. We are a few days from the start of the spring equinox and a new year. I see that we have some people in various different jurisdictions that are having some events around this time period. So if you are on the call tonight, make sure that you do share. We're going to start with introductions. I'm going to give each minister about two to three minutes to be able to introduce themselves with jurisdiction that they're in with ministry that they actually work under. And that's about that. Some of the work that they're actually going to be doing in the ministry as well. Then we're going to transition over to updates on legislative work. And then straight into a quick updates on committees. We will give a time period for each minister that is here to be able to address those things. We'll try to be not quick, but make sure that we do get the information out to you all in a timely manner. So that we can move to the addressing conflicts portion of the actual town hall. It's essentially kind of the same breakdown of what we had the last time, but we're going to discuss different topics. All right. So I do want to go ahead and start with the first minister I see in my first box. So let's go ahead and go with Chief Minister Jaiel, then Chief Minister Naima, and then we'll follow up with the rest.
Okay, cool. All right, family. I am Chief Minister Jaiel of the Ministerial Council of Health. Again, welcome to our second town hall that Ministerial Congress is having. And so today, well, actually just a little bit more about myself. I am in Region Three. And specifically Clemson, South Carolina. And so outside of that, I was able to learn about Arna back in 2019. And officially become a member in 2020. And since then, I have completed the Level One and Level Two courses for the Indigenous Naturopathic Doctors Course in addition to the Level One Juris Course. And also most recently, last year, I was able to finally submit my homework for the Indigenous Psychology and Cosmology Course. So a little bit of background on myself. Much of my work and passions that I have been able to lead with was first truly initiated when I was in undergrad at South Carolina State University. You know, I had an opportunity to be a part of SGA there and then eventually start my own organization. And just initiating a bunch of going green initiatives. And also health initiatives. And so we eventually built food gardens for for schools in a local area before starting one on campus. And so I have just been, you know, diligent in learning to, you know, learning the best strategy that we can implement for our community. And so it was really a huge lesson to come across Arna in 2019. You know, this, this is the black print here. So I'm excited to not only be a part of this amazing team on our Ministry of Congress, but also to be amongst you know, some outstanding nationals who are realized in this moment and those who have yet to realize themselves as, you know, new members of our government in participating as nationals. But again, welcome. And yeah, I'll see y'all later.
All right. Thank you, brother. I think Chief Minister Naima says she's having some issues with her actual audio and video. So we're just going to go on to the next minister. We have Chief Minister Yashiahu and then we'll go with Yogi.
Peace, peace, family. I'm Minister Yashiahu of the Education Ministry. And for those who don't know me, I'm in the Tallahassee Region Three area. We are currently developing an online course that we have tasked ourselves to start. So we have been really working on finding a platform that's affordable and that we can present that's real sustainable. Just a little bit about my background. I'm a Level One, but I operate at a Level Two Juris. Prudential in Arna. I also have my genealogy. We've opened up a lot of businesses in the past that complements our idea, or what was my idea at the time, of jurisdictional development. And so we've opened up a large part of our home as a family here in Tallahassee for any nationals that wanted to come and join in real time. And we've enjoyed that over the years. We've learned a lot, but right now, we are currently assisting the congressional office with a couple projects like a website that's in development and we're also working on, like I said, it's a multifaceted online course that sort of plugs into all of the polarities. So it's a challenge to try to grasp all of the concepts and keep them in a working flow to be able to present it in a way that is edible for our target market. So we're having fun with that, but we do have an initial rollout that we want to talk about when we talk about our accomplishments and things like that in detail. So we look forward to that. And so I'll step off there, but I'm glad to be here.
Appreciate you, brother. Chief Minister Yogi.
Say yes, sir. Peace, family. Chief Minister Yogi Alakum. I'm in Region Six in Texas, San Antonio, Texas. Under the Chief Minister of the Cosmology and Psychology Department. Little bit about myself, I joined Arna back in 2019. I completed Level One Courses in Indigenous Doctors, Health Course, the Cosmology Course, and as well as the Economic Specialist Course as well. And, you know, we're working on a couple of projects, you know, just for the cosmology department to, you know, and just some of the things we do is just establishing, you know, one universal peace and overall creativity as the cosmology represents the twelve polarity, water, energy, creativity. Oh, yeah, there we go. There we go. Yeah. So we, you know, establishing, you know, a lot of projects for the cosmology department to establish all of these things. That way, you know, our people can, you know, work, create and be creators, you know, and their purpose and their peace and, you know, things of that nature. And with that, you know, I mean, just yeah, a lot of projects coming. And then as far as anything else, I'll stop off right there. That's my, that's my thought. That's me.
All right. Appreciate you, brother. Who else we got on here? I think we got Chief Minister Naima Beck and we have Chief Minister Manny Bet.
Okay. Peace, family. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. So peace, everyone. I am Minister Naima Shiyamaru. I am the Minister of Birth, Death and Forensics. So I am currently located in Detroit, Michigan. I just recently got credentialed in the Arna Tribal Birth Course, which was amazing course. I'm also in the process of doing dissertation work, which I've just began on a birth topic that I'm very excited about. I'll be attending the birth conference coming up in April, so hope to see some of you all there. I've passed about three or four, I think, four bills so far during my time as minister and working on building out the cabinet. So I think we have one more interview to get locked in based on those who have recently been interested in joining the cabinet and they'll probably get rolling with our meeting sometime in March, early April. So, you know, the concept of birth and death is pivotable, is pivotal and imperative to our basically restarting how we're going to be handling our survival and our lineage because we look around right now. Our living, how they're eating, how they're operating, it all begins at birth. And then before that, it goes back to mating, proper mating. So really getting to building out this ministry, building out the death portion of the ministry as well, because those things go hand in hand, really working to build out the website. And also getting institution created where we can begin to house courses and just educate not only those within Arna and our nationals, but also the community because even those, you know, so-called black people who are in, who are not in Arna, we are in a desperate situation when you look around what's happening with our families and our children. So I'm very passionate about the subject. I've had two home births myself. And I think I'm done having children, but I definitely want to help others be able to do that successfully. So if anybody's interested, any more interest in the cabinet, please feel free to reach out. My email is naimasheamaru@gmail.com.
Peace, family. Minister Manuel Bay, Chief Minister of the Community Action and Family. Been Level Two, well, Level Three Juris now, Level Two in Health and Level One Psychology. Working on building out SOS and DOS. And, you know, we're currently looking as, most of you see, we're getting the emails on to get that in in rotation as far as like staffing up. And we got some goals and plans that, you know, that's gonna be a good look, not just for, you know, just the people working in the committee and then the tribe, but as well as the tribe and as a as a nation. So we're just, you know, just building it one brick at a time. So we're just making sure that, you know, laying the foundation correctly. That's what we are working on here. So, you know, thank you all for coming in and joining in as well, first and foremost. And we're just looking just to build out the jurisdictions, you know. I'm in Region Three right now. Started out in Region One in New York City and now I'm down in Miami area. So, you know, if anybody knows anybody that's down here, South Florida, you know, we could tap in and, you know, work on building out the jurisdiction down here. I know the brothers building up in North, in North Florida. We got ATL already on and popping already. So we're looking just to spread out and building out the jurisdictions, you know, where we at. More focused on the South. But that's, that's where we at with it right now. So, you know, appreciate everyone coming out and, you know, we got more in tune for later on.
I appreciate you, brother. Did we have Chief Minister Wishak?
Peace, peace. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Peace. Peace, everybody. It's Chief Minister Wishak. Sorry, I was a little late this afternoon. Came back from practice and I had problems getting on my laptop. So sorry for the tardiness. But I'm Chief Minister Wishak. I reside now in Yamasee, Region Three, in the Charleston area, North Charleston area. I came in Arna back in 2020 officially. I always, you know, studied Ali and, you know, studied his books and stuff like that. And so coming into Arna for me was just coming into something that I was already kind of familiar with. So the transition has been easier for me. Over the course of these couple of years, I took classes in Juris classes, cosmology classes, economics classes. And, and those are the ones I was credentialed in. The reason why I wanted to become a minister was because, you know, I had a reading and it inspired me to become a minister. So shout out to the brother Bahak who do those readings. So if you're a new national and you're looking for ways to, you know, find yourself and find purpose in, you know, what you want to do in life. I know that brother, brother does readings for like life reports and he gives it to you in a book. So you can check that brother out. But, um, yeah, so now I'm a minister. Honored to be in the, in the position, wrote a couple of bills that, you know, I think that now that the SOS is kind of starting up now, my whole goal with those bills is to be in that position and work on things, initiatives, like the language. The Language Act that we passed, putting funding in, you know, gyms and stuff for boxing. And so just taking the funds now that we have, that we will have access to and, you know, start building the things that we put down on paper and that we envision. So I'll go over a little bit of that when it comes to the legislation period, but that's me. Thanks for having me.
All right. Thank you, brother. And I don't believe that we have Minister Fatima tonight or John Bricks, unfortunately taking care of some family things, but make sure that you all do tap in with him and we'll share Fatima information as well. However, I am Minister Boloon and I reside in Region Two, Baltimore City, Maryland. And my email is honorsitech@gmail.com. I am honored to host the Minister, Ministerial Council of New Age Technology and Science. And also to host the position of the President of the Council. Thanks to you all, great brothers and sisters who allowed me to host this position. During this term, I really have specifically been given a focus, focusing on the essential skills of our actual tribe around technology, things like staying in alignment with the family contract. Each of us had a specific area that the family is supposed to focus on. And the science and technology areas where within my time, I want to make sure that we have the practical understanding of things like utilizing our phones, computers, applications, also creating apps for the tribe. I'm really right now, just trying to bring people within my ministry so that we can start building up those various different things. And what I've found throughout this time is, of course, I'm within the ministry that Chief has always had a step of head as far as what technology and things of, things of that nature that are out there. However, I don't really have like the blueprint like AMA to start from, right? So I'm really focusing on what information is out there, what people have the knowledge, who can we recruit to bring in? So that we can be able to continue to evolve out the nation within this set ministry, but also use my own talents. I do have my own solar company with partnership with Brother Neve, who's actually a part of the tribe as well. And right now we have the ability to sell out our solar panels. Do EPC, which is essentially create panels for people who have the design ability, but we got to train up the nation, right? So within the next two weeks, we're going to be having our Solar Ministerial Council meeting then for the New Age Technology and Science Ministry. And I'm going to start training people to do solar development. And if they're interested to go down the alignment for installation as well. So we can start getting some people within the field, making some money. But more importantly, I would like to create some bills that will allow us to be able to build up our GDP with solar technology as well. So those are my main plans. We only got about a year. So if you are interested in getting into this actual ministry, you have the talents or just want to start building up some of the skills, please jump in and we look forward to building with you. All right. So we're going to go straight into legislative work. And then we're going to go start asking some questions from you all to get you into the conversation as well. Right now, I want to start with Minister Yashiahu. He seems like he's the first one who has links here. So I'm going to give each minister about five minutes to quickly go over some of your bills. Talk about what bills you've been able to get passed, if you have any coming up. And then if there are anything that you need help with, you want to go ahead and step up and speak about that now. But we do want to give summaries and overviews of our actual bills. If you have questions or concerns, make sure you reach out to us by email sometime between this spring session. I yield the floor to Minister Yashiahu.
All right. Appreciate that, brother. What I did is I tried to attach a lot of links to the words that are in this slide. So we wouldn't have to go too far. If you touch the links, it'll take you to some of the things that I'll be referencing. The first link is dealing with some of the first bills that we drafted out of the department dealing with the scholarship. And it was a homework task, if you will, for those who won the scholarship to accomplish a few things for me in this department. It was a course. And it was also a website. And so I've been coordinating with a few people to help me assist with me in that endeavor. So we've gotten a website and we just now got a hold of a platform. I think that's going to work very well. We can scale it. But so this first legislation here, I'm not going to go through it too much, but who won that scholarship was Minister Naima and myself. And so you've heard her. She's working on a dissertation and as well, I'm working on a dissertation as well. So congratulations on all she's accomplished. And you'll soon see how we'll tie the course and our website together to be a one-stop shop and an interactive platform for the public at large. All right. And so we can go to the next, if you will, my friend. And everything should be on that slide. Okay, this looks like the IE RA or the Indigenous Education Reclamation Act. It was actually shortened. This is the old version of it, but the name simply was changed. And how we will finance it, I think that was edited to show that we will get the resources from interacting with the community. And also, we was also speaking about the nonprofits and how we will be prospecting through proposals for grant money. And so we have been working on that as well in the background. And when we open up the floors for our board gathering, these are the things that are already being placed that we can prospect. So this bill here is focused on the earlier stages of development with the youth. Now, again, my dissertation was targeted towards ages seven through nineteen. And so we've sort of categorized all of the basic foundational educational points throughout the different polarities of our life systems. And we simplified it so we could teach it to the youth, but in a very effective manner. Now, traditionally, in the educational system, they just, you know, basically one size fits all. And it's a very highly politically in colonized agenda to create work slaves in a foreign jurisdiction out of our particular race, even though we're the indigenous people. So we, in our historical studies have showed that, hey, we, we was here already. We already had our own educational institutions. We already had our political institutions. And we already had our ability to navigate politically with other body polities. As such, we already had our, you know, so we structure all of this in a very efficient way, categorized according to our body systems, which you know, if you're not familiar already, that this corresponds with the cosmology. So it's very, that's a very important aspect. This is where we derive all of our intelligence. This is nature's ultimate way and expression. And we take that and we derive the ability to plan our births, plan our outcomes. Just as a personal testimony, as we got into the details of this, we immediately had to do a self, you know, observation and reflection of our own families and get things in order and be honest with ourselves like, hey, this mandate is way higher than what we think we are. And before we get in a real, you know, adjudicative attitude, we need to sweep around our front door. And so we did a full assessment of our own home, of the people around us to make sure that we don't mislead nobody and put everything back in perspective. So this right here is dealing with particularly the health and the psychology, because we take the planning for the child into preconception. Meaning even before the two parents come together to procreate and conceive. We take it to the point where they have to be psychologically assessed nutritionally and culturally. They have to be on the same paradigm and they have to be equipped financially. And so when all of these are in order and they have a brotherhood and they have a social, political agenda that they're unified behind, right? We can assess that their health psychologically and physiologically with machines. We have that. And so we have professionals that will help assist with that. Not only that, the type, the type of way that they contract and come together and create a life plan, checking their compatibility with their cosmology charts, checking their, their plan, are they on their purpose? And do they have their financial institutions in play individually, right? And when they come together, so we walk them all the way through that. That's how detailed we go into this. So we go to assess the teachers the same way. And the child has an opportunity to come into existence prepared for education already before it's even conception, because the mother teaches the child in the womb. So we make sure we're very attentive with all of that. So I hadn't got the certifications yet, but I'm currently enrolled in the Health and the Birth Workers Course. So um I hadn't got the certi- certifications yet, but I'm currently enrolled in the health and the birth workers course. And so even though I hadn't taken my exams, I've torn those books down and had an opportunity to really gain some insight. On how deep this planning goes. So this this bill right here takes us into the details of the importance of. The nutritional psychology and the cultural psychology and what it really means to plan for the success of our nation. By building, you know, our future through the educational department. So uh the next one, please, my brother.
Yes, sir, and you're working under two minutes now.
Okay, uh what's the timeframe, five minutes?
Seven.
Okay, right.
Seven max. Which one you want me to choose?
Uh let's go to uh, we don't have to do the learning center unless you want to see it, or you can click it, it's just a picture. Uh you don't have to go to the Dindum Studies. Let's go to the Learning Center. You can just flash that and come back, please. That's just something that we acquired. We still have access to this. Uh we are, this this is one of the nonprofits that we're linked with, so we have access to the center for free. I've spoken about this uh earlier during the Ramadan season, but we still have access to this. We can event plan. We have access to it twenty-four hours around the clock, but we can do the events, of course, during business days. Um so we've linked up with Florida Impact, you can look them up, and they have funds that are ready to be dispersed. We just got to draft the proposals. So again, we'll be sending out um invitations to the board and we'll immedi- we will immediately after being assessed and appointed our positions. We will be um participating in drafting in the uh beta proposals to uh give to this lady, so we can. Do classes for her, and we don't have to wait for the funds for that, but that's how we build our per- performance portfolio, so it can pair with the uh proposals. So thank you for uh going to this picture, we still have access to this and we got more events to come uh with this facility here. And um could you go down, please, to the, there we go, thank you. To the, you see here where it says uh rollout of new course platform? What I wanted to do was you would have to do it, uh President Belong. If you go to these links, the link is attached to it, it'll take you inside a test run of our course. If you can do that and just see what pops up, you'll give the uh the viewers opportunity to. Uh login required, okay. So this is a test run, uh we put this together uh earlier this weekend and we said we'll present it, so uh we don't have.
I gotta do, bro.
Uh you can request to join class. This will give me an opportunity to see how it runs out of the uh admin, the request to join the class. Alright. So anyway, um. It hadn't came through, so if you can't get in it, that's fine. I just wanted to uh test the links, because when I tested it from two of my devices, it went through. I just didn't know if it was security. Uh you can go to the IEP class, see if there's a a password on that one. I don't think it needs it, it shouldn't. Okay, if you go to the activities. Activities right there, yeah. Uh you can start a quiz, you can say, let's start a quiz. So uh this platform will come interactive with games, with flashcards. There's all different type of ways, we can even play Jeopardy, so um. Uh on my side, we have what you call a set, which we have uploaded our information and it takes it and creates uh unique patterns of flashcards and all of that, so. It looks like it's not working on your end. I'm not gonna try to troubleshoot it right now, but you know, definitely appreciate going to the links. No, I'm not gonna troubleshoot it from this end.
Alright, you want to name the rest of your accomplishments, so we can um respect the other ministers' time as well?
Uh that was the, that was actually one of the main things that we were working on, so uh you know, I can definitely end it right there, you know, thank you for. Uh your time and running through some of the things that we were working on, and I look forward to reaching out. To all of the potential board members, so we can get the ball rolling again. Thank you.
Alright, appreciate you, brother. Um anybody that, anybody that are nationals that are on the call right now, any questions for the Minister of. Education, any ideas that you may have um that has come up since the last call that we have, or maybe just since you've been in honor, based off your professions? I'll take two questions.
Peace, peace, family, this is Quahhu.
Peace, family.
Uh peace, I don't have any questions, just uh maybe I will, but I'm with uh some of the grant proposals I'm going to have are going to involve. Uh training for children in certain areas, so I would just like to know, you know, if we could possibly in the future. Just have a word, maybe, you know, I'm de- definitely sure there's some things that could overlap. Um maybe I could be of assistance to you guys in the Ministry of Education, and I know you definitely could be of assistance to me, so I just want to put that out there for you, that's all.
Gratitude, uh we already have about uh three. Uh maybe four grant proposals that we've already drafted, and then we got like just hundreds of different uh grant ideas. We already got the step by step how to do it, to be trained by it, so. And so I'm just saying, we're ready, we are ready.
Oh yeah, I'm gonna tap in with you, get some training, get some, get some knowledge from you then.
Absolutely, um just for you and for everybody, I'll be uh posting, I don't really do a lot of posting because of my job, but that's no excuse. I'm gonna be posting the um the board information and anybody that knows me, you know, you can call me right on the hip, I answer, I'm not too hard, my schedule is flexible, so. Um I look forward to it, God.
Alright, alright, that's the big guy.
Alright.
Appreciate you, brother. Anybody else? One last question for the Minister of Health, I'm just gonna need you, education, my bad, y'all. Alright, um then we have uh Minister Naima.
Peace, family, is, are my um bills showing up? So that I can put the link in the chat if needed.
Um which one is this?
You're on Brother Jaiel's bill right now.
He can go and see uh if it's already up, because I can put mine in the chat. I thought they were on the document, but.
Um. Childbirth Preparation Act, Infant Advocacy Act, Birth Record, Record and Record of Decease Bill.
Perfect, there we go. So you can, the first one. Okay, so um this was the first bill that I passed um last spring. And this bill was just basically setting us up so that we are bringing children into the world in the proper way. So if you can scroll down a little bit. So this is the Child Preparation Act. If you go down to the section four body of the bill, you can scroll up to that part. So these are the basic requirements um for nationals to conceive in Arna. And again, as I was saying in my uh introduction statement, that we want to be setting ourselves up so that we're creating and we're improving our lineage, right? We're using positive eugenics in a sense to make sure that we are building community, building jurisdiction and building a healthier nation. So some of the parameters that we will want to be moving forward, in order to do that, the first thing is being married. You know, we're seeing a lot of single, you know, families, single mothers, single fathers out here raising children, and it's not sustainable and nor is it healthy. So being married within the US or the tribal jurisdiction, um being on Indigenous food science diet, so especially even before conception, not just during pregnancy. You know, eating this junk food or eating a fad diets, you know, me personally, my first um pregnancy, I was vegan. You know, and uh we were able to still have a home birth, but I had a lot of complications with that, thinking that I was being very healthy, but I was actually more nourished in many ways. So making sure that we're following food science diet prior to conceiving the child. Um the next thing is to have a bio scan or and or natal chart health reading by Indigenous doctor. To understand whatever health complications you may be uh susceptible to or may be currently experiencing. And then engaging corrective measures to make sure those things are eliminated again prior to conception. The next thing is having a minimum of two streams of income. Uh we know that in in this new world that we're in, that you know finances can be very strained. And if uh the wife has to work throughout her entire pregnancy, um if there's a lot of stress in the household when it comes to. Finances, that puts stress on the pregnancy, puts stress on the couple, the relationship, and it's not a healthy environment. Um next thing is to reside in a physical home structure, so making sure that we have a home base, because ultimately we want to have a home birth. I mean, having a birth center, birth is is an option as well, but then there's nothing that can replace being in your own uh physical environment that you can. Modify and make, you know, healthy and and attractive the way you want to, and the woman can be comfortable um during that pregnancy. Um next is to have a planned pregnancy, so to make sure that you're saying, okay, if I don't want to conceive right now. You know, I'm using uh different ways to avoid that, and then when I'm ready to conceive, that it's planned, it's on purpose. So again, ensure that, again, all the things before that, that you're married, you're on the right diet, and that this is um an intentional pregnancy. And the last thing was to be of an appropriate age, twenty years or older, um having a child prior to that, there's a lack of maturity, a lack of experience. Et cetera, so this just sets nationals up to have kind of a baseline of how they should be conceiving children. You can go to the next bill.
My bad, this Zoom thing be like in the way.
Oh yeah, no worries.
It's the forces, y'all, it's the forces. Alright.
Okay, so the next one, actually, you know, it's on the same document, I just scroll down. It was on the same document, yeah, keep going. Can you actually go back to the first one, because the second bill was on that same document just right below it? Okay, perfect, right there. So the second one is the, excuse me, the Infant Advocacy Act. And so the purpose of this bill was, is to produce children that are optimally healthy, protected lawfully. And know themselves in order to focus their energies on designing purpose. Uh which serves and empowers their Indigenous family, community and lineage. So you can scroll to the body of the bill. So this one is more focused on um what the parents need to do um to ensure the infant has what they need. So first thing is that um the the baby should be born at home or in a birthing center with birthing specialist. The next thing is to have a birth record administered by Arna within thirty days of birth, just to make sure that the baby um is properly recorded within our jurisdiction. And that should also include making sure they have all of their proper documentation even after that point. The next thing is to make sure the child is breastfed for a minimum of twelve months, two to three years is most optimal, but at least that first year of life. Uh next is to ensure they are inoculation free, which is basically means no vaccines. Those are completely adverse to our biology. Next is to have parents who maintain Indigenous food science diet, as I mentioned in the first bill. And then lastly, to have a cosmology natal chart reading within twelve months postnatal. So these two bills kind of go hand in hand. The first one focusing more on uh what the parents need to do uh preconception before the ch- the child arrives. This one is more so to make sure that the once the baby is born, they have everything that they need to continue to thrive. And between these two bills, neither one of them are like have any kind of penal system, this is more so. At this point, just trying to set up a certain parameter to ensure that we're doing things properly, but this is not to try to, you know, um. Have any kind of, you know, again, penal system where you're in trouble if you don't do this, but more more so that you're seeking counsel. Um with the Birth Ministry and with the Health Ministry as well um to improve and to achieve this outcome. Okay, we go to the next bill. Yep, it's still here. Can you enlarge it? Okay, so this is, the next two um were basically about record, properly recording births and properly recording deaths in Arna. Um and the reason for that is um, you know, for public health, for national planning, for census records, identity and legal protections. So you can scroll down. So we will have a document, once a child is born, that you will fill out and complete, that will have information such as their name, the gender. Time and date of birth, location of birth, um the mother's and father's name and information. Um scroll down more, ethnic background, um and I say that because, you know, we could have someone who was in Arna at this point. That maybe is married to or has a spouse or has a significant other that is of a different descent or or mixed descent. And we need to be aware of that, um the Arna status and then the parent's marital status. So this is just pretty simple, straightforward, just recording the birth and then scroll down, keep going, keep scrolling. The next one is similar, but it's the Record of Death, um so Record of Decease Bill for the same purposes of public health. National planning, census records, identity and legal protection. So similar to a death certificate. This would have information such as the name, um the birth date and time, if you can scroll some more, please, the section four. Um location of their birth, their gender, um their marital status, um the surviving family. Um time and date of death and reason for death, you can scroll down more, please. A location of death, disposition method and location where they cremated, burial, or they go through the tribal birthing pro- uh tribal burial process, excuse me. And there aren't a status. So again, just keeping record of that, and we ultimately like to be able to have a document that is legal in order to assist um. Like with life insurance and things like that. So this is something that the cabinet will be working to assist with to create a death record um format. That can be used um in the US jurisdiction as well. And tho- those are all my four bills.
Alright, amazing job, Minister Naima.
Thank you.
There's about ten seconds to spare. Um we are going to open up the floor to uh the nationals now. I'll take two questions here. If you have questions about the four bills that Minister Naima has been able to put into legislation, um this is your time. You can either raise your hand or you can come off of me. I see Minister Yash Yahu, um anybody else? Alright, we'll start with Minister Yash Yahu and we'll follow back up.
Appreciate it, family. I just wanted to say that was excellent, that was an excellent presentation. And of course, you already identified the similarities and a lot of our agendas in our departments. And I wanted to uh also uh put a reach out for you because um. My uh significant others, she definitely wanted to uh speak about your services, because she's also in the class with me. And we wanted to talk about uh supporting your bill and also talking about another bill that we want to talk about. So um I just wanted to say, we have a lot in common with our um our bills, with the IEP. And how the the planning goes that far back in dealing with the birth worker and stress management. And creating a mental environment for the mom. Giving that child the genetic benefit, so I just wanted to say good job and I look forward to working with you as always.
Appreciate that, yeah, definitely reach out. I'd love to, I'm I'm always interested in more bills that we can create and how to. and how to make the ones that have already been passed, you know, actually coming to fruition and have more structure and foundation. So yes, definitely reach out.
Alright, thank you. I see um Katori Day with a hand up. You got the floor.
We can't hear you, Katori.
Oh, peace. I didn't even hear you um say my name. Uh, peace, everyone. Uh, yeah, that was a great presentation. Um, I was just wondering.
You broke up, sis. Could you, could you pick it? You're breaking up. Could you start over? Can anybody just hear?
Can you, can you hear me now?
Okay, now, yes, I can hear you now.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I I was um asking if you could elaborate on the insurance portion of it. Uh, with a particular carrier or what um? Is is there an opportunity for uh people who are licensed in the uh in that industry to participate with you?
Hmm, that's in in deaths, you mean in death insurance, like life insurance, you're saying?
Yeah, life insurance. Did you, didn't you mention something about life insurance?
Yeah, so currently we can use um, so for birth, we can use the, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so currently.
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, yes. So currently for birth, we have a document that can be used in the U.S. jur- U.S. jurisdiction in order to get a passport. So that's us being able to engage in the other jurisdiction with our Aboriginal document. But we currently don't have anything in terms of a death document that can be used for um that in the U.S. jurisdiction. So I'd like to be able to work with jurors and others to create a a a an Aboriginal death record that can be used in order to be able to receive someone's life insurance. Just the same way you have to present someone's death certificate in a U.S. jurisdiction.
Right, okay.
So we currently don't have that, so we'd have to work on that. So I'm not sure, there could be an opportunity. I I'm honestly not fully adept in the in the death world. I'm more so into birth. But I'm looking to work with others and bring those in my cabinet who have that experience um that can assist with any other documentation, any other ideas we have that would assist in um insurance or other things. So if you're interested or have some ideas, definitely reach out because I I can't say or not, you know, what kind of like where we'd be at with that at this point in time. But if you have some ideas, I'd love to hear about them.
Sure, thank you very much. Can you, can you drop your um your email in the chat?
Sure, will do.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
For those who can see the screen, uh, we have Minister Naima's email up here. Naima She Amaru at gmail dot com. And again, she is in Region Five in Detroit, Michigan. And we had Minister Yashiyahu up before. He was on education dot org. Alright, so wonderful job. We are going to go with Minister Yogi next with the seasonal government official bioscan.
Yes, sir, God. Awesome, awesome. Alright, peace, family. So this is the uh seasonal ad uh for bioscans for government officials. And so with this um bill specifically, it is going to be used to conduct psychological um you know, forensic psychological um reports, you know, say, on the government officials. And so with it, so it's done every winter and summer solstice. And the reason we are evaluating the government's uh psychological behaviors is to, one, to make sure that they are performing, you know, to the best of their abilities. Um, as we know, you know, in political positions and because of what we're doing in honor, we deal with a lot of um you know, a lot of energy, a lot of uh events that could occur, uh personal events, family events, things of that nature that can affect our you know, performance, you know, in our positions. And so with this bill is based on diagnostics. Reason we uh say diagnosis because we could also use the birth chart because we do biocosmology, you know, versus having to do bioscans or the DNA methylation test, which may be harder for a government official to get because everybody's not around, you know, someone with a bioscanner and things of that nature. But so yes, we're evaluating their psychological behavior. Um, just to give an example of exactly what I mean by that. In a report, I may use a government official's birth chart and then identifying any squares or oppositions in their NATO planet's position or their progression uh planet's position as well. The reason why it's only done two periods, which is the winter and summer solstice. It gives the opportunity for, you know, their birthday to come by. The reason we want their birthday to come by is because each time the birthday comes by, the planet progressed one degree. And so that may be a new square in a chart, opposition, semi-square, et cetera, that we may pick up on and then be able to um, you know, highlight that, like, okay, these are some of the potential dysfunctions that this person may go through or exhibit, you know, in their nature. Um, example of that is, let's say, the uh, we got the Ministry of uh Defense and Intelligence and they son has a square uh to their Mars or something like that, that nature. They got a square between, they got a T-square on their sun, Mars, and Saturn. That's going to tell me, and it's in the first polarity. That's going to tell me, okay, one, let's say he's on the uh nine of spades, this is a progression. If I see that in a, you know, in a chart in our port, you know, if I'm writing my report, I'm going to highlight that as, okay, it's a potential for them to experience some type of type of event, injury, death, even causing it themselves. Injury or problems or some type of breach, if it should occur. Man, we deal with the laws of possibilities and cause of effect. I'm not saying it's fate, but it's something that we're highlighting because it's a T-square, that is a very harsh position. They would need, you know, very deep discipline, you know, within that area. And so they're the Ministry of our Defense and Intelligence, first polarity rules uh military and defenses. And so they got a T-square right there, okay, we got potential for them this year because, you know, they son progressed to that degree. Okay, it's potential for them to have an effect on how they're handling the defenses, maybe it's a possibility they may cause a breach somewhere. So we need to make sure that they are very disciplined in how they're moving, they you know, living out their general orders, you know. We are, you know, as Chief said, we could recite it, but we got to actually live those general orders out. Um, and so I will highlight that through and they, okay, squaring their Mars, okay, that's aggression. They could either be doing something super aggressive and it's Saturday, okay. Do they got discipline? Are they eating healthy, et cetera? And so we are, this bill is only in that to not to police them, but to just, you know, offer any guidance because there's also dealing with, we deal with biocosmology. So if it's in first polarity, okay, they could potentially have some problem with their brain and central nervous system. And so now if they're not eating um, you know, the food science diet, you know, eating anything that affects the nervous system or, you know, the blood supply to the brain and things of that nature, it's going to portray yourself in reality too, because we deal as above, so below. So if they're not eating healthy or they're getting stressed out, you know, within their family environment, things of that nature, we want to highlight these things. That way we can offer any guidance, support, whether it's nutrition, you know, psychological evaluation, you know, how to handle certain problems. Um, you know, anything of that nature. So this bill is just really to help us, you know, keep going and being able to uh perform correctly. And this bill will be uh the first reports for officials coming this summer solstice uh for two thousand twenty-five, fifteen, one hundred eleven for the indigenous uh calendar. And so is a bill and Brother Jael is helping me facilitate this bill as I'm partnering with the Ministry of Health too as well to um really make sure we have structure, security as even though I'm using birth charts as the default, to me, a birth chart is just as important to protect as a bioscan report. You know what I mean? Because I'm pretty sure none of the government officials do not want these reports, birth charts, et cetera, to get out as you know, people could use it for various dysfunctional reasons. And so Brother Jael is helping me, you know, secure, you know, everything within this bill as far as getting a report. Putting it, you know, in the data so we can have and, and so the uh government officials' information and report on their psychological evaluation is protected all the way through. You know, it's very thorough. Um. And of course, we are looking for, you know, in the cosmology department, as far as the council, I am looking for certified cosmologists, psychologists, not just not only in the Aboriginal University too as well. You know, if you got a certificate or any skill from the state or federal levels or university too, we are looking for those people because, you know, we're dealing with psychology, you know, it's various specific areas a person can be skilled in and somebody may like is a, I saw a class that I'm interested in taking in the state is for forensic psychology evaluating and identifying criminal behaviors, you know. That's something I haven't learned at Aboriginal University. I could learn in the state and then bring it to the Aboriginal University to create courses for people who want to learn in that field as well. And so if you got various skills in different psychol- uh psychology areas or cosmology areas too as well, as far as divination rituals, you know, we're looking for those people. That way we, you know, create more bills. This is the only bill I got on my uh ministry right now. I'm am looking to create more, and I do have another one in mind as far as when it comes to the protection of birth charts and things of that nature. Um, as we start to unpeel and layer back biocosmology, which goes more into health sales, how the sales represent all four elements and things of that nature. Um, but yeah, so that's that bill. Um, if you got those skills, definitely reach out. Um. Looking for various people skilled in these areas so we can get going and we will have a um a meeting this March. I just wanted the SOS um and DOS recitations to take place. That way we could see who, you know, are in those areas so we could see who's um, you know, certified, I mean, not certified, but are admitted in the SOS and DOS. So we're properly structured with all of the layouts of honor right now. And so now that that has commenced, you know, we could get going and I will be hosting a meeting uh this month for March. Most likely on March sixteenth, which is my birthday, seven of diamonds day, because I want to I want to talk some, you know, ideas and see what people who already been reaching out to me about, you know, people been reaching out to me about uh joining the ministry and things of that nature. And so I think that'll be a great day. Seven of diamonds is the lucky millionaire's card and I do want to talk ideas that's going to generate us some money because I know that's the other hard part. We need some money. So I will be bringing in ideas as far as um things that could help us, you know, get to the wealth and build it up, you know what I mean? And also I'll be listing out some of the state courses that I've been looking up so far to um take that, you know, some of you may want to take too, who are interested in, you know, having those skills in uh psychology and things of that nature. Uh, that's it as far as my thoughts. Uh, I see Brother uh Long guys hand up.
No, I just was telling you it was over time.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, that's my last thought, you said.
Alright, can I be clear? Because I can switch over.
Uh, yeah, I can. I can hear you. It's kind of muffled, but I can hear you.
Uh, I may have to um switch out my audio. But um we're going to open up the floor for few questions for the ministers. So if you are a national and you have a question about the cosmology department or about the um actual bill, um please raise your hand or come off the mute and we'll, we'll see you.
Um, I did have a question or maybe more so of a statement related to the cosmology department.
Yes, sir.
Um, so I'm currently taking the cosmology course right now and um, I'm super interested in like trading. Um, I did a little bit of currency trading a few years back, not so much now. But um I've been thinking of getting back into it. And one thing I noticed is that uh there's like hour charts and, you know, different charts for different types of uh timeframes. And one thing that jumped out to me was the hourly charts and then there's like charts and cards for minutes. And um, I studied a little bit of economics uh in college and one thing um that interests me is like the study of cycles. So one thing or an idea that I've been pondering the last, I guess, week or so, is developing um a unique um indigenous technical analysis tool that can utilize cosmology. Because one thing I found when I was trading and studying and reading different books was that, you know, there's two methods to trade. You can trade um technical analysis or you can trade uh fundamentals, which is like the news um and things like that. And the vast majority of people trade technicals. And cosmology being literally an analysis of cycles, um I found that there could be a great correlation there. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, I'm kind of been taking notes on it, just interested in what you may have in terms of feedback.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yo, it's crazy you say that because this was last year. I was on a brother, his name was Atlas Cloud. Now I'm not trained in, I was trading um Forex and things of that nature, Forex and options. Now I'm not trained in it, so I don't want to, I was under him basically just copying the signals. With a little bit of knowledge, I do have uh Forex and options and things of that nature, right? And so, but I was trying to use the cosmology most definitely to trade the currency based on the hour, minute, and also my weekly chart. You know, I mean, trying to catch, okay, I'm on the ten of diamonds. I mean, I ain't gonna lie, yeah, I I blew my account. Like, I lost money. You know, even though I used the, I most definitely lost money. But it's only because I didn't, you know, responsibly educate myself in the news report, the technicals and things of that nature. So I do think it is still an opportunity for what you're saying as far as merging all of these great things together. And brother, we definitely got a bill because I'm looking at to create a a team. I was creating it for a while, but I definitely could create it for honor overall of a team where we just put together those who could do the news, the technicals, those who could do the cosmology, the hour and minute, because yes, it is a a fluctuation as far as I, that I definitely noticed myself, like, okay, I was on the ten of dollars, it is definitely um to quote unquote, say, you know, volatility in the um in the market, you know, on certain hour periods, men, they say, you know, you trade, so you know, you could go to the hour and minute. Um, you know, on the um, on the charts and change it today. I'm gonna trade a day, I'm gonna trade the hour, I'm gonna trade a minute. And so, yeah, that's a great uh analysis and thought. And so, yeah, let's definitely build um. Yeah, yeah, so I'm definitely, yeah, definitely, you definitely prompted me to stone in it to make the um meeting on March sixteen. I think that's a great idea, brother.
Alright, thank you, brother, for that question. Did we have anybody else with a um question in the chat or on the line for Minister Y- Yogi?
Peace, Minister Yogi. It's Katori again. I just wanted to chime in. I thought with the brother. I'm sorry, say that one more time.
I was gonna say he was breaking up, I'll just make sure, okay.
I don't know why this phone is breaking up. I guess it's the area I'm in. But I was just saying, I um, I said peace first and then I said, I think that the, what the brother said before uh that was speaking. Uh, to you, that what he said was borderline brilliant. I said, and I think that that's something like that could work because of the things that you guys predict are so close to being. Um, you know, what happens, that something like that could actually work. And then, I mean, just to unmask maybe a um, maybe a somewhat of a small fortune. If everybody in Arna, not maybe everybody, but people who are interested would pool resources. And do something like that on some uh technical analysis that are predicted to be um. A, a very uh positive outcome that, you know, uh we could win and. Um, quite a bit of um, you know, money for whatever purposes that we deem necessary in the nation.
Right.
So, yeah, just wanted to say that.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Definitely, yeah, that's, yeah, that brother's brilliant. I always watch his posts too. He always posts something just, you know, magnitude is just like, what? And so, yeah, most definitely we could uh, uh, you know, evaluate that through cosmology. Um, and just create a, there's a whole team. One thing I noticed within that field when people do signals is. Sometimes they work individually, they don't really work, you know, together. And so I think with us and our concept at honor, I think we could just unify and just create something where, you know, I mean. There's a lot of brilliant people who study various areas that affects the market along with the cosmology. Now we got a cheat code that could study the psychological behavior. Now we could study Elon Musk and Donald Trump crazy sales and. Say, oh yeah, they gonna say something crazy today, market about to go crazy, let's get in, you know what I mean? You know, it's just many different areas along with the hour and minute too, where it's like, okay, it's a great money period during this time. And you know, we could, it's twenty-four hours, there's many markets where we can even trade, I'm pretty sure, you know, at night like. Um, I forgot the, the other type of market, but you know, I say, just many different things. I think we, if we unify and pull together our, our minds and our education and the knowledge that we have, you know, I say, we create something great. You know, I'm saying, using the cosmology. But yes, definitely, thank you to both of you.
Yeah, thank you for that addition, sister. Um, I just wanna double down on this, this tribe is like only gonna grow. As far as we all get involved now, y'all. Um, we know we got some brilliant people. We talk about you all the time in our meetings. And bring out the various different people who actually has strong, uh, strong other um professions that's out there that we need to get enacted into these meetings. So like, if you got a question, if you got an idea, get in touch with us. The more we collaborate, the stronger we gonna be. And that's really the tone that we wanna leave y'all with in these meetings. I know because we just getting started, right? We're trying to like lay out the platform that we have, let y'all know the things that we are building, et cetera. But the more we do this, um, the more we're gonna be giving you all time to speak about those various different things. And when you get into the uh ministries, you're really gonna be able to get in there and be creative and um shine. So please, make sure if you got anything that pop up at any time, get in contact with any of these ministers. Cause we are looking for the help, we are looking for the bill and we are looking for prospects to be able to make sure that we make this a beautiful nation. Um, who is up next? I believe we can go with either Chief, Chief Minister Manny Bay. Um, or Jael can go since he is also controlling everything right now. You ready Manny Bay?
Yeah.
All right, so you up?
What's happening? All right, so I'm gonna just go with just a few things on it. So, man, I just got the um, when I got the one bill with the, on the website that went through. So I'm focusing on, on um, in the next year to present a few other bills. Um, but at this time, I'm probably just go over some of the, the bylaws that we do have for the Rite of Passage and um. And honor, right? So, if those that don't know, we have it listed on the, on the right portal website. And um, if you've been, you know, seeing the posts and um reading your emails. We have the, the, the build out of the DOS and SOS. Um, so we need people to just, to step up and, and you know, those that are qualified, I know some of them you have to be qualified. But um, you know, if you are credentialed and you qualify for any of the positions, just step up. I mean, you, you know, we're gonna be working on this together, you know, um, everybody that's in the SOS and the DOS. And within the tribe, you know, we, we working on this group economics, so that's what it's about. We are provisional government, meaning that we're building out right now. We're still in the process of building. So we need the people to, to really not just join the tribe, but to step up and, and, and play the roles. You know, whatever role you could get in and then work your way through it. So that, that's what we need, that's what we need in order to grow. You know, we, it can't just be a handful of people just trying to do everything, because we're gonna be moving really slow. So the more people that step up, put the trust in the people, put the trust in the tribe, put the trust in the government. The, the quicker you, we're gonna see the results that where we wanna be at. So we, I'm gonna go over some of the amendments that, that we have. Just, you know, as, as a reminder of what we, of what's required within the Rite of Passage's institution, right? So, you know, in, in the, in the Rite of Passage's in- institution. It should be composed of body of men called the Sons of the Shrine and the body of women called the Daughters of the Shrine. And the Shri- and the shrine is defined as heterosexual indigenous family system of the sea indigenous peoples of honor. So we focus on, on being productive and producing life. One of the, the, the bylaws that we have by um executive degree number three. Is the Rite of Passage Societies for SOS and DOS. And amendment one, it goes over all Aboriginal nationals of the Aboriginal Republic of North America. And ISIS, it used to be known as ISIS at one point, must complete their nationality process by completing the nationality exam. Rites of Passage orientation and the Rites of Passage orientation. The, the bill effects of, the ill effects of colonization has adversely impacted indigenous peoples of the Americas. In all areas of life, as, as we can see how we live in a society today. Learning the requirement of the natural law system of indigenous people is incumbent upon all nationals. In order to effectively operate in indigenous government. So, you know, this Rite of Passage is, is vital for us all to go through. No one is exempt from it. This is a way to set your mind, body and, and your soul and spirit in the incorrect order. So we'll be, all nationals will be required to complete the national exam, learn and recite our preamble, which we're currently doing now. Uh, on, on the national spectrum and um, and recite all general orders and complete the orientation. Of natural law class and prime lesson number one, example of our rights of passage society. So all of this is just coming into play just to set our mindset so we could be, you know, unified. And, and operating as one with the same common goals. That, and, and we still open to, to, you know, other suggestions that could help improve currently what we have going on. So this is just the foundation and everybody brings their, you know, the experience, the expertise. And that's why we have the councils and we have these meetings so we could have our think tag, think tanks and build from there. And implement whatever we come across. So, you know, e- everybody has their own unique experience and we value that. So don't be afraid to speak up and, and, and speak what you know of and, and bring your ideas, you know. Uh, even if it's not exactly how it plays out how you plan it to be, at least you put it out there and we could work on just, you know. Organizing it to, to where it needs to be. So in article number six, this, this is um, you know, on, on the constitution. It's the Aboriginal law of, as expressed by natural law system of the constitution and all laws. And persuade there shall be the official state natural law system. The state shall guarantee freedom of worship for all, but we gotta follow these moral codes, the forty-two law of moral codes of Maat. Which is in the constitution as well. Uh, you know, if you're not familiar with it, I suggest you get familiar with it. And, and that's pretty much our universal code right there. And everything is built based upon that universal code. And a few of them that we have here is um, moral code number nineteen. I have not committed a transgression against my own value system. So always, you know, it, it, it's the people, it's the value, it's our culture that's first. Anything that, you know, your place of worship, whatever you believe in, that's your belief. But, you know, that shouldn't go before, you know, the tribe, your people, your community. Next one i- is moral code number twenty-seven, that have not caused disruption of peace. You know, we are government of universal peace, so that's what we strive for. We, you know, we go to war for my art. We go to war for the peace, for the harmony of our people. So Maat was pretty much the indigenous way of life, um, you know, back from ancient times. And there was, you know, universal world order on, on that note, which, you know, there, there were tribes, you know. Uh, 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 back in the days that were war on each other, but it was at a minimum. You know, more, it was more peace and, and more unity back from Africa to the indigenous tribes here in the Americas. So, and it was all based on my art, based on peace. Uh, next one is a moral code number twenty-nine, I have not overstepped the boundaries of my, of my rights forty-two. That's the forty-two laws of the moral code that have not violated natural law. This amendment is sealed by Chief Ali. And it's uh, you know, registered at the time with executive in Chicago. Next one, I will, is the completing the entry to the Rite of Passage program. Requires a tribal member to memorize the honor preamble and honor general order as we just stated, right? And the, uh, recitation of the preamble and general orders can only occur at. Honor official summit meetings, local jurisdiction meetings, on the monthly fitness gatherings and on the solstice of Equinox and Powerhouse. So you could be questioned at any time to recite. So just right when you recite your, you know, you, you pass your, your, your recitation. Um, that we're going through right now, that doesn't mean to stop and not continue to keep it fresh in your mind. Just do it every day, so it's always there. We become second nature. We have the general codes, what's gonna set you up. And, and the preamble can also be used as um, you know, manifest- manifestation technique as well. Cause it's, you know, it, it's for the, it's for the tribe to prosper in, in, in many ways and putting our society there. So you could use that as a mantra.
One minute, brother.
All right, and I'm gonna just finish it off with the God and laws of the honor right, Rite of Passage's institution. As I just mentioned, it's the honor constitution, the moral code of indigenous common law systems, relationship contracts. And the honor protocols instituted for nationals. So you have your honor manual. You have the constitution where, which has the moral codes in there and common laws. And then we have the relationship contracts, what you find on this co- um, on this website, the right portal. And then the on, on the government um website as well. So get familiar with all of that, read them through. And, you know, this is the way of society, the mentality that, that we're setting the direction on. And, you know, these are moral codes. And if you, if you read all the moral codes, you're gonna see, you shouldn't have, if you're a righteous person, you wouldn't have an issue with it. You could see it and you could see that's where society needs to be at. So we're starting that as a tribe within the tribe and that's part of our indigenous systems from, from way back to, to now. So we're bringing it upon us all and just, you know, just make sure you study and step up. Don't be afraid to fail and, and um, you know, let, let's build this tribe, let's build this nation and, and keep it going. That's my time, peace.
Appreciate you, Minister. Do we have two questions for Chief Minister Manny Bay? Can you give us your email real quick, brother, while we um pausing for ten seconds to see if we got any questions?
Sure, you could get at me at um, right to remedy, R I G H C. The number two and remedy, R E M E D Y at morelifesolutions.com. That's uh, one of my business uh, uh emails right there. And uh, my information is on the, on the government website as well. If you didn't get to write it down, it's right on there as well. Contact us. Um, we also have honor, um, communityculture.org. That's the website for the community action and cultural. So um, we have some information there, on there as well.
And shameless plug, make sure y'all go and get that book, um, for Minister Manny Bay about reparations and repair. Um, I have my online copy of it. I would love to get a physical book so I can get my brother to sign it. Cause that's gonna be a big book. It's gonna be a huge book. They gonna look back a hundred years from now, look back and be like, damn, them brothers was the forefounding of repairing our people. So make sure y'all get that.
Yeah, and there's a lot of great information and, and that just shows the, the, you know, the group work ethics that, that, that we have. And that we're building upon. So, you know, that, that could go across, you know, between every ministry um that, that we have. And, you know, just, just study and step up. Don't be, you know, don't, don't let fear or anything stop, you know, just be great, take the risk, take the chance. And we usually overthink for the worse when it's really not actually that bad as you start to go through it. So just, just, just trust, believe in yourself and, and wherever you at, you know, it's a starting point and you're gonna level up. So, you know, th- this is us reaching out to y'all. This is a, a nation for the people and we need the people to, to join in. And, and, and really, you know, build and, and, and put the trust in, in one another. That, that's a major key.
Yes, sir. All right, any questions out there for this brother before we move to the next ministry? We are at nine oh four, so we are officially at about ninety minutes into this meeting. Um, so we are gonna make sure that we continue to be briefed in our summaries of our legislation family. We are actually gonna move into addressing the conflict, because I know that's juicy stuff that people love, right? So we're gonna go into that uh while we have y'all, so we can make sure that y'all, that everyone is heard. Um, I think we also have a place that we wanna make sure that we're heard as well, uh, for the record. But w- we wanna get that out the way and then I wanna come back with the committees. And of course, everybody who got the email today, you will get this playback. But if I don't see any hands, I am going to go with uh Minister Jael. Your seven minutes is on, brother.
Okay, cool. Everybody gonna hold your peace or speak now before we hop into the Ministry of Council of Health?
No, you ready? We got a Let's Go Clemson, so they ready for you guys. Go ahead and go.
Okay, cool. Shout out Brother Magwell. Good brother, man. Uh, all right, cool. So I am going to hop into the link here. So, yeah, just some context. Um, I forgot to mention earlier in my introduction that I was not originally a part of the uh. Original first in paneling of our Ministry of Congress. And so um, we had a sister um, who, you know, stepped down and then um, shout out to our president Balloon. Who um, proposed some legislation to fill seats in our uh government, our twelve houses. And so uh, it was through that, that uh myself and the Chief Minister of Communications, John Briggs, were able to take position. And uh, that was just in the past uh fall two thousand twenty-four year. And so uh anyhow, I um, had, I've had some idea about a bill. And honestly, I haven't even had a chance to propose it in-house just yet. And uh, I've been, you know, doing some research and development. Uh, and shout out to Minister, uh, Chief Minister Yashyahu, put a little battery in my back last night. Checked in with them and I was able to just go ahead and, and chisel out a draft of a uh. of a uh, of a bill. And so the the the, one of the first bills that I was interested in uh proposing is something similar to what we have in the United States foreign venue, the HIPAA. Um, and so, let me share my tab here, but just a a summary. And possibly, we could go over a little bit of the mechanics of it, but um the point of this bill was to knock off a couple of different areas in terms of regulatory uh and compliance standards that we needed to institute within our jurisdiction. Uh, and especially as it relates to health, and so uh, this is, you know, my first um proposal. Well, actually, you know, I think I I proposed two other bills in in the fall last year, but this is, this is the first one, first time proposing this bill here, and so um the four different areas that I kind of wanted this bill to touch on is not only uh a regulatory and compliance um component for protection and privacy of our clients as it relates to things related to health and human service. Uh, but also wanted to create some legislation that could also touch on strengthening our association uh as credentialed indigenous naturopathic doctors by our Aboriginal Medical Association. And so, you know, we we have, there's so many of us, you know, um, providing these amazing services and so many more that are coming into this association. Uh, you know, I think that we should be able to get to a certain point where we can exchange intelligence and, you know, just create like a resource bank of best practices where, you know, some cli- some doctors have a effective proven protocol with certain um disease or things of that nature. And, you know, being able to uh make that available for case study and um and, you know, protocol implementation for another doctor without having to um, you know, reinvent the wheel per se. Uh, so the other thing is that, you know, uh, for those of you don't know, I was in a uh a car accident a couple of months ago and I broke my leg, and so um, even at that time, I was, you know, brainstorming on the bill, but there was a whole nother experience that I was able to have and kind of a perspective that I was able to have um in terms of navigating and interfacing with insurance and uh, you know, release of my um uh, testing and diagnostics and uh, things of that nature. And so I I real- it it helped me to realize that, oh shoot, there's there's a a legal um compliant framework that we also need to uh, you know, pass legislation on. And so um, the last two areas to touch that the bill is is really touching on is also po- possibly, um, you know, all doctors who are credentialed, you know, we have a contract with the Aboriginal Medical Association. And um, but taking another step further, if, you know, you want to participate in that resource bank where, you know, we are looking at some of the the private uh insensitive materials of our clients, you know, you have to the proposal will be to take a certain oath to, you know, to serve and to protect and and to honor uh the privacy. So, you know, something almost similar to the uh Hippocratic oath. I'm not sure if anybody's familiar with that, but um, but yeah, so something similar to that. And um, and then lastly, the other area that we wanted this bill to kind of touch is being able to interface with domestic and foreign insurance providers and uh legal entities, you know, who would be um providing representation in, you know, legal matters. And so, again, that was a perspective that I realized how um fundamental and valuable it is just through some of my own recent experiences as I'm uh, you know, matriculating through. Um, and so, you know, this this bill here is, you know, just a proposal, hopefully we can um well, I know for a fact that I'll get some good feedback from our uh the rest of our Ministry of Congress and our our committee members. But, you know, that's pretty much um a summary of the bill, and then, you know, there's other components where we have, for example, we we have our fasting and fitness reporting is a matter of law, right? That was something that was passed about two, almost three years ago, and so being able to regulate um you know, the compliance, ma- you know, arm mechanic of that, you know, this this bill would cover not only that sector, but even in uh Chief Minister Yogi's bill with um his bill having to do with government officials being assessed on a biannual basis. And so just wanting to, and he spoke on the security and the protection, you know, uh and the privacy of of this data. And so this is a very integral and very fun to fundamental um bill, you know, that's going to cover across several different uh sectors and ministry. And the other one that I I would I would mention is um is, you know, sis- Chief Minister uh Naima's, and so um oh, I forgot to be sharing this part right here. But, yeah, so um, just being able to provide a systematic uh framework behind all of these wonderful standards and protocols that we have already realized. And actually, you know, like I said, just putting a system and a protocol and a methodology and a a documentation process that can be protected um and 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 held in private. And then for those who are to be able to access it, you know, having some some regulation on, you know, who can access that. And so uh
One minute, brother.
Okay, thank you. Um, it looks like I covered everything, let's see, I think there's one more thing. Yeah, so that's that's pretty much it as far as the summary of this first bill that I will be proposing here for our spring legislation. Um, didn't have a chance to share it with our committee, but I'm definitely looking forward to putting it out there for um additional feedback and, you know, um poking holes in it so that we can perfect it and, you know, be ready to get this thing passed in the spring session. I yield my time.
Thank you, Minister, wonderful job. Look forward to taking a deeper look at that bill and filling in some feedback to you. Uh, we're gonna open up the floor now to the nation though, to allow them to ask some questions and provide some feedback as well. So I'll take two questions, again, if you want to raise your hand, please do so, or please come off mute and we will yield the floor to you.
Okay, peace, Katori again. Um, I was just wondering, when you had your accident and you broke your leg, did you have income to cover the income that you would normally have gotten? Had you not broken your leg, or did that impede you in any way of making your normal income?
Yes, so actually, I was on the job, I was working this uh seasonal uh, the seasonal job. And so w- with that element involved, worker compensation um kicked in. And so the accident was, you know, it wasn't my fault, some, you know, someone had pulled out in front of me, but, you know, they only had uh state minimum insurance coverages, which is, you know, twenty five K. And, you know, my in uh health bills are, you know, already at twenty five K, so um, the other element that gets, that kicks in at that point, if you get hurt on the job, is uh workers' compensation. And so I knew nothing about that, um, it's been a a wonderful learning curve. Um, especially in this position, you know, legislation and considering our own um structural framework, but, you know, workers' compensation, they also um, part of their responsibility is to pay for your medical bills. Yeah, medical bills and then, you know, possible um uh, you know, depending on how severe your injury and how much it's impacted you, you know, a a settlement at the end as well.
Wow, the reason why I was asking is because um um, if you were like an independent contractor or um uh you will, whoa, if it's something like Uber or Lyft, of course, they have uh coverages up to they have these blanket policies that covers almost anything that's not your fault. Had it been your fault, then it probably would have went back onto your insurance first and then onto Uber or Lyft coverage or or dash, whatever, whatever, you know. But the reason why I was asking is because, because we can form a group, we could get group rates for short-term disability, which replaces your income in case you can't work. And um, most of us on the phone, or I believe many of us on the, that are on the phone, um, we we're independent contractors and or self-employed. And so, um, that being said, if you don't have the insurances to cover you, then, you know, hospital bills and things like that can wipe you out if you're not liquid, you know what I mean? So um, I think it's a great idea, I'm not um in a position, but I I just wanna just put that out there that forming a group so that we could get group rates for disability, accident, dental vision, whatever you wanna do in the in the United States jurisdiction, you're able to do that as well as, you know, uh, do other things also in in the nation, so.
Yeah, and I I really appreciate you acknowledging that, um, you know, that is uh, it's two things. One thing is is something that I realized, um, you know, as it was unfolding. Um, and then even in the consideration of the bill, uh I realized that I might need to split it into two different bills. But to your point, us being able to pull our funds together to create our own um subscription of 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 insurance that can um cover these types of of um of things and whatnot. And so um, I I think it is incredibly uh instrumental and to become a responsibility of of us as a um, as a group and as an organization and as a society to, like you said, pull our funds into our own um uh insurances and and things of that nature, like I said, so that we can get group rates. And so that that is something that's definitely uh on the table for consideration to be, you know, further uh bu- built upon and and developed, and then eventually, you know, we we will be presenting that as an opportunity for nationals to participate in, or it might be something that eventually um, could be, you know, in addition to loose or things of that nature.
Right. I think I made a mistake, huh, good?
Naima made a good point too, that um it may be more strategic as well as we continue to grow to build out through the local jurisdictions. Um, that way, we would have already made contact with the proper government structures, et cetera. And um, then be able to go ahead and move forward with acknowledging the fact that we have people who need to have their health protected. And these are those people, um, and go down the route of possibly getting some group insurance done. So this is a great topic, and um, this is something that I would love to see us, this is why we need these think tanks going in these ministries, right? And um, not only just the ones that Chief do, but these ones within these particular areas. So um, great points, sister. Could we get, um, well, not could we, I'm not gonna force you, uh, if you got a question now, great. I'll take one more from the nation, if we have one. Let me check the chat real quick. Uh, Minister Jaiyel.
Yes, sir.
It looks like um Brother Murray is trying to get in, can you let him in?
Okay.
Also a shot.
Oh, gosh, it was three people.
Yeah, sister was about to put belt to ass on you, boy, let her man up in here, stop crying. Happy sister, I mean, happy uh solar return, sister. Sometimes, George, y'all can see my hair be a little bit everywhere, I'm trying to remove different pages, make sure we keeping up with time and stuff like that. But thank you for bearing with me. I'm gonna go ahead and hop in and then um let Minister Weshat go ahead and get comfortable, then let him finish up, we gonna move into conflicts.
Okay.
All right, so um, if you can, brother, if you have access to it, that would be great, if you could pull up the family contract. I'm really gonna speak from that, I spent time in the last ministerial meeting, um, speaking about my bill. On the Government Restoration Act, and um, I think it was a good bill because we are still having some changes, right, and respectfully. Because we are all um indigenous black people in a crazy country, right? And we go through things, and sometimes we have to be able to relieve our posts so that we can take care of family and things of that nature. So we have been able to make wonderful additions with uh Chief Minister Jaiyel and um our guy, Chief Minister Jai- Jaihe. Um, for those who you don't know him by Jaihe, John Briggs, who unfortunately cannot be here tonight. However, they have been wonderful additions to our team and has been able to really allow us to um, you know, spread our rings, the wings a little bit, and I believe within this next year, um, we're gonna be able to continue to evolve. Not only just in our group, but continue to spread out this nation even further than what we are already have been able to do um, through some of the things that you all have heard today. Next, what I really wanna focus on is we do have another house that um is open. Um, we have the prepare for today and also the next upcoming session. So we haven't really discussed exactly what we're looking for uh within the House of Civics and Governance, which Minister Akil used to house. However, I do believe that um we may end up landing on adding someone within that seat just so we can keep that momentum going um and be able to pass it along to somebody who actually and and not that, excuse me, let me reframe it, pass it on to somebody who is ready to take it on and really wants the position, right? Not saying that anybody who ho- hosted any positions didn't, but, you know, things happen. So we are looking for people who really are excited the house. Hosting the house um and being a leader and making sure that we are staying up with our collaboration and communication with the people who are looking to build with us. So if you are interested in civics and governance and building us out, um, please reach out to us at honorministerialcongress@gmail.com. Or if you're cool with any of the ministers here, um, reach out to us directly, even myself at honorsit@gmail.com, or you can just reach out to me personally um in the chat or something like that. I make sure I get you my number before we end here. Cool, so what I wanna end on is, uh, brother, if you were able to find the contract, can we pull that up? The family contract?
Okay, got you.
While you're doing that, essentially, the point that I wanna make here is each ministry within various different of these um documents, you, we pretty much have our own protocols and articles that you wanna take a look at. I really wanna spend the rest of my time um here, building out, making sure that we are being the best nationals that we can possible, right? And some of that is making sure that the bills that we have created, they're fully implemented. So I'm spending some of my time making sure I meet with the ministers, making sure that we give time within every two weeks meetings to see what actually is needed so that we can follow through. Uh, what we find is that, you know, we can create some of these laws and things of that nature, but there's already laws within the constitution that we gotta make sure that we all are holding ourselves accountable and following it now. Even with the SOS and DOS coming on the pipeline. So i- it's imperative um that we really continue to discuss around how do we make these things um practical? Um, how do we continue to check in on each other and make sure that we all are staying um accountable to do these things? And if there's some things that need to be adjusted, that's where I feel that And if there's some things that need to be adjusted, that's where I feel that a lot of the new legislation is gonna come into play. So. Using myself as an example, um the technological performance standards under the family contract speaks of like. Things like we live in a techno- technological world, so our families need to be under like the same cellphone plans. And communication systems. So one of the things I wanna take a look at is what are the best plans in each region? Um economically, but also for protection. And I'll be looking for some help doing those various different types of things. Also, um everybody must have access to a computer. So what are the best type of computers where we are now as far as laptops and at-home systems? How can we protect our information? I need to collaborate with each minister to see what technology is being used right now. And each ministry that we need to be able to create some legislation around to make sure we're protecting, give you an example. All jurors are keeping documents. And do we have these documents on the cloud? Should nationals, when they join the actual um nation, should they be keeping that documents on a particular type of cloud? So that they can access them at any time, or also just keeping them safe. Things of that nature, our birth records, our death records, as we build out all these various different things, we wanna make sure that they are protected. Even our government transactions that we're building out now. How are we protecting these things to make sure that we're acting at watch, et cetera? All adults and children should know the proper use of phones and computers. So what's the best classes out there in the regions? I need your help in the various different jurisdictions. Figuring out what are the free courses, what are the low-cost courses, what are the best courses that are specific for indigenous children? I need to get with Yachihahu to determine what are the uh great levels. Of information that are indigenous that we have access to, that we can get to these parents. What are the best platforms to do those digitally since we all are spread it out? And where are the areas on the ground as well? That intel will come from you all. The last couple are all adults must know how to build a website, um do live on, do online presentations. They need to be able to type. At least two family members must learn computer coding, children or adults for app development. Um all family members must know how to financially, do financial transactions via applications. All adults should have access to each other's emails, social media accounts, bank accounts. Build online accounts, websites, and never abuse the access to these systems, et cetera. All adults should know how to keep laptops, tablets, phones safe, I already spoke about that. And all family publications, books, videos should be stored electronically. So that's where I'm really gonna be putting a lot of my focus. Um who are the professionals that we can recruit to help us build out these things, cuz my profession is in solar. I had to spend some time to condense my NAPCEP certified training down to a focus of the indigenous home. Um I've been able to do that, so again, those of you who are interested in that two weeks from now to on a Sunday. It's gonna be the think tank for solar and I will be training you all on how to do solar development. Um the basics of solar, how to get it at your home, financing. In the plan that we have to impli- implement, how not only you can make money, but we can build the GDP of the nation. Through solar and sustainable energy. I'm going to yield my time, um I'm just going to end it on opening the conversation to again. Those professionals, but also the ministers in the various different areas for us to look at each of these documents. Um and the technology that will be needed to carry these things out. I would love to build with you all on how we can implement those things. One last example. We use the bioscans. I would like to see us to be able to. Really take a look at again, how can we start manufacturing those or building a contract to get those ourselves? But also start doing more testing around how accurate, make sure that everybody's using utilizing the same scans. And giving the proper information and we're updating our hardware and softwares at all times. I yield my my time.
Alright, wonderful job, Chief Minister Balloon. AKA the president of the Ministry of Congress. Uh does anybody have any questions or comments to his ministry?
Peace. Um as far as the solar goes. Is there a way you can um on my on my website, I have uh. One of the things that I offer small businesses is uh the the chance to get uh. EV charging stations at their workplace or. Even if they have a, they're on a lease, a long-term lease, they still may be able to install EV charging stations. And it's a revenue sharing type of uh program, but it also offers solar. So I was wondering if you could take a look at that and see if you can just look at that to see. How real and realistic do you think that is because uh there's no charge for it. Um they they split whatever monies that are um. Generated from them putting the solar on their commercial building or. I think they even started doing it on homes, on single-family homes or whatnot. That and then the the EV charging stations where they split fifty-fifty whatever money that those. EV charging stations generate, so I was wondering if I dropped my uh website in the chat. If you can look at that, because add that because I thought, okay, um. My little sales motto or tagline is making and saving revenue, talking about small businesses. So that's a way that they can make some extra revenue and add to their bottom line, so. That was my question.
One hundred percent, sister, that's exactly the type of things we're gonna be talking in that think tank. Um quick win, property assessed clean energy is something that can be implemented all across this country. That's the the program that a lot of companies are using for the commercial side, even for residential with four plus dwellings. What happens is they're taking private funds, but it's public legislation. Because they believe that commercial properties are in communities and they're using up a lot of energy. And they should give back to the community by making sure that they have clean energy and other like uh updated HVAC systems. Um even now to installation, windows, you can build out a new envelope to your building. So in this this meeting, I'm also gonna be teaching people how to acquire property so that they can also build it out. Do the installation, get HVAC, get shower, get everything you need to kind of build out the building. Um and take care of the energy and things of that nature, but also implement things like you said, EV charging stations. I also have EV charging, charging stations, racking and panels. Um so again, I y'all don't see me talk about some of those things so much because. It it is high-level building that I be having to do a lot more on the ground. Um than I do on social media, but I do have access to uh the actual panels, racking. Charging stations, batteries, anything that goes to the solar system. Um I have access to those things, even if you just are on the ground doing what you're doing and you need product. Please reach out to me and I can get it for you, get it to you for the best price cuz I am the plug.
Okay, I'll drop that that link in the in the chat. If you could give me some feedback, that would be great. Thank you.
Wonderful, I got it. Alright, do we have one more before we move along? Alright, so uh Minister Weshat, are you back on? You are our last one before we go into addressing conflict.
I say if you talking uh Weshat, do you, my mic on mute?
I said peace, sorry about that. Um I had to run around and and get some stuff done, that stuff that came up last minute. But um I'm about to actually walk up to my place with the the bags and stuff that I have, my laptop and stuff. Um so I'm not gonna be good until about five, ten more minutes. So if you guys wanna go ahead, that's that's cool, but um yeah, so I'm about to walk up to my place now.
Alright, so we'll come back to you.
Okay, cool.
Alright, cool, so we are gonna go straight into um conflict uh and addressing it this week. And more so I wanna focus the conversation on the image externally and internally. Of the Aboriginal Republic of North America. Um if you all are staying up to date, or if not possibly under Iraq. Um over the past couple years, even if you're possibly new as well. Over the past couple years, we had some various different things happen um that I feel like. Doesn't reflect well on the wonderful opportunity we have here as nationals of the Aboriginal Republic of North America. On another issue as well, some of these things serve as security risk, high-security risk. And how they are handled, I think they are also good examples for us to pretty much analyze them, learn from them. And be able to um communicate a little bit clearer as not only just adults. But families, as we continue to evolve in the work that we do and build out our own internal families as well. Some of those things being like IOTN, uh which is Indigenous of the North. Some of those things being like uh the wonderful group that we have over there at Sun Village. Um currently is the um issue right now. And uh even just some of the young platforms that pop on on social media that you may see that. Uh chief talks about has used our documents or not even may have anything specifically to do with the Aboriginal Republic of North America, but. Within the same market and utilizes the same platform around tribal governance or. Come up with these different type of government documents and they're selling them online. I think it is imperative that one, we are aware of these things as nationals for the reasons that I said before. But also know how to handle them. Civically, respectfully, um but also we don't ever back down because it's also honor versus everybody. And that should always been be the mentality. Um I don't have to bring up any specific. Examples or call anybody out, but anytime you see a sister or a brother online. And you know that they are a a an honor national, even if they're not somebody that's in good standing, but. We know that they haven't fell out with anybody in the tribe or they haven't had to go to our courts and. Uh be expatriated for any type of reason, um you feel what I'm saying like? I- if they have respectfully tried to hold up the moral code as a national, they deserve respect. And we should all be willing to back up that person online or or to be prepared in the street. Um to, you know, a dirty, a a dark, dirty alley as well. These brothers and sisters that you meet with in honor, you should be comfortable at all times to be ready to protect. And ready to stand up for based off of whatever we got going on, but it gotta be on code. Because if we, the the second we start jumping out there, out of code or for people who aren't on code with us. We start losing good brothers and sisters. And and that's not good, and we have a big purpose, y'all. We got a purpose. A lot of us found this because our purpose was here written for us before we even knew this, right? But we vibrated to this actual area. So I'm not gonna take all this time to do like and address the nation, but I wanted to make sure I really got some of those feelings off and then um. Share the mic to some of the the floor to the ministers, but also to you all, to any questions that you may have. But wanna set the foundation that it is honor versus everybody and we stick to the code. We have a moral code for a reason. If you ever have an issue um with a national, if you ever have an issue with a jurist. Uh we have links for juris complaints, but we also have links for you to, there's an et cetera area where you add. If there is another problem that you may have with um any other services or even a national, national issue. But you have twelve ministries here. We may be missing two people, we have three people. But you can reach out to these people in any ministry or reach out to me. That's why you all have elected us to be able to one. That's how you stay on code and stay on post and keep things in the family, but also that's how you have a um. A a group that can be able to not just make it public in that sense, but get a solution. We don't wanna make things public just to be smearing people. We are family, we are tribe, so. We wanna get the proper people in alignment with each other so that we can come to some type of solution. So um I do want to make sure I open the floor to the ministers. And again, the topic for now is um how do we make sure that we protect. The image and the brand of the Aboriginal Republic of North America when these systems come up? And what are the resources that we have to provide to make sure that we do protect each other? Minister Naima, I'm gonna um yield to you, and this question is now open up to the fourth floor. So if you're a national who have a question about these issues or if something has happened to you that you wanna address. Or don't make it about yourself, make it anonymous, whatever you wanna do. This is your time, you have the floor. Alright, Minister Naima.
Okay, peace family. So I just wanna say two quick points on that. Um the first is that we have to all remember. That we're coming from an oppressed status, right? Um and so people in that condition kind of run into two categories. Either you're over overly, you're like you're over in conflict, you're always in conflict, fighting with family, fighting with friends, like you're always ready to fight. So you get into Arna and people are trying to cooperate, and then when you have any kind of conflict. You're ready to expatriate, you're ready to throw in the towel, and then like gossip, right? So we have those who are like in a constant state of just conflict in their life, in their own brain, they're just always in conflict. Then we have those who are like conflict averse, who are like terrified of conflict. You know, the spiritual ones, right? Like, oh, I just wanna meditate my crystals and let's all just get along and don't understand that conflict. Is just a natural part of life and that we're building a government and we're really in the early stages and that any, any empire that was built. Had conflict, but they also had conflict resolution. So to be adverse to conflict is also dangerous because then you get, you know, you get fearful, you get concerned. And now you're not productive in finding ways to resolve the conflict. So we have to just be be aware of those two categories and try to um be okay with conflict. As long as there is a process for a solution. And if you see something that you believe is is not operating correctly, then you speak up in a respectful and appropriate way. You know, you present uh with the drill society that there's an issue, you come to a minister like because the point is that we're all, this is our government. So you have to take accountability and say, okay, I'm gonna help make it better, not just be scared and run. You know, or always wanna just be in constant conflict and not seek resolution. So that was all I wanted to say about that cuz I I feel like we kind of have those two category setting, but we're trying to get out of both of those dysfunctional modes. Then just be able to be conflict resolution and problem-solving people and build something that no one else is doing. Where you gonna go and run out of Arna and go to what? There's there's nothing. Or if you're gonna do it, go build your own Arna, but guess what? You're probably not gonna do that cuz it's a hell of a lot of work. And so we might stay in Arna and and build it and make it better and find your place. And if you see something that's not right, then you work on improving it, not gossip and slander, that's childish. So let's grow up and and let's work to build this because a hundred years from now, it should be something phenomenal and there's gonna be conflicts then. There's gonna be conflicts five hundred years from now, it's always gonna be a conflict, but we have to have a process to do it, and our process should just be able to improve. It's not perfect now, but if no one says anything or takes any action in a functional, respectable, mature manner. Then it's gonna stay how it is, so that was all, I yield my time.
I'd like to build on uh what you were speaking to, Sister Sister Naima, Chief Minister. Um the point you made about whenever a conflict arises. There's also an opportunity for something to be improved. Um you know, whether it's an internal process or it's. An actual interpersonal conflict. You know, like you said, we are in very beginning stages. As a reawakened uh society, literally like coming up out of the grave. And so conflicts are inevitable, but I think it's. Even more important that we look forward to the opportunity that conflict brings. With us being able to become more efficient in our ability to cooperate and to co-organize. Um and to collaborate with one another. And you know, what we're participating in, you know, every single one of us, we are all uh co-creators to this experience. So just know that anytime that a conflict arises, there's an opportunity for something to improve. Um you know, whether it's the the format or the format of the um. Resolution, but. The last thing I wanna say to that is that, you know, when you run away from conflict, you. Also take away the opportunity for us to improve. Uh, as a people, you know, as an organization and as a society and as a nation. So that's all I wanted to say to that. Uh, appreciate you acknowledging that much. I yield my time.
Great point, brother. And uh the in in various conversations, I've heard um the statement. And I've even felt it myself through the time of growing as a national and. The Aboriginal Republic of North America since two thousand nineteen. It's like. Can I trust the process or do I have a space? To be able to verbalize what I feel without being shunned or be pushed out? Or the first time I'm able to say something, I'm attacked, right? Um, so it may forces you and we see it in all type of fields, right? We see sisters who are afraid, um even when they're touched. Misappropriately and it's very clear that it's wrong, right? But the it's people shun them for not going straight to the police, but there gotta be something there. If these things happen, right? Because fear is is stifling. Um, and it has fear to of our people has stifled us in a great way. Um, so coming into this space, I just wanna remind us that um we understand fear. But that's why we're working together as a group. And that's why we have all these people within these various areas working as a body. So you, the trust works two ways, right? In order for us to be able to build trust, we had to put each other in front of each other so that we make sure that we are. Etching each other and aren't shopping's on. So the more we give these opportunities, the better we're gonna be. Trust Brother Yogi to be able to evaluate you. Trust Brother Manny Manny to be a a good brother to talk to about family. He is married, right? I I think I I haven't found a sister yet. But it is important for me to be able to have a brother to be able to tap into that. I can trust that not only he's gonna hold me accountable to these things, but also is an example to these things as well. And we got a couple other brothers on this call that um spends time with us building, but also has a family to take care of. So these are examples for me as a man to be able to get in alignment and those are the things we have to focus on. Not all the the gossiping and everything else. So before I shift uh shifted to somebody else, I wanna make this one clear point. If there is a problem and you are brought to the National Juror Society. Please attend. If you do not attend, we have to believe. There's either some lying going on. Some type of espionage possibly going on. Um, I don't know what is going on, but we have courts for a reason. So the only way that we can trust you respectfully, whoever you may be, is to show up to court. And when people do not do that, keep in mind how you show up online and in the public. Through the situation that I seen with um Ansar. I seen a lot of nationals underneath his posts, loving, smiling. Uh, as they used to say back in the day, chucking and jiving. You see what I'm saying? Like. Y'all niggas is crazy. Let me be the first one to tell you, you're crazy. You look crazy, right? Um, and I I I say that just to say again because it's honor versus everybody. And you gotta be able to have enough maturity sometimes to step back and think a little bit like. This brother was the president of the National Juror Society, y'all. He sat on other adjudications. I was there. I was there. So. I bring this up to say respectfully and I told him on the individuals on in the individual conversation that I wouldn't. Uh, put our conversation out there in public respectfully as a brother cuz I still respect that man. I looked at that man as a mentor, the same way I told y'all. I looked to Yashiahu or Manny Bay or Washak um as fathers and and leaders in this tribe, but. The important part from that conversation is I wanted to give him the respect to come to him directly and say, brother, you. Respectfully, you held a position. And you have to go through the actual process like everybody else. To go online and slander and handle them things the way that he did, even if he was correct. I felt disrespected because basically what he said was he didn't have enough love or respect for me. To even give me a chance to hear him out and take my own perspective on what may have happened. To take my own opinion based off of the moral conscience, to use my position to be able to and use my brain. To advocate for all people that look like us, who has taken a a jump. To be able to be in a place like this and do the things that we're doing. This ain't easy. So we are replication, we are representation, excuse me, and replications of each other in these spaces. So respectfully. Um, you can't move like that, bro. You gotta come to the table and 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 let us all be able to hear and learn. And Chief as well. We can't hold anybody accountable if every time it's time to hold people accountable, people drop off and run and run their mouth on line. So I just wanted to be clear about that. Why? Make sure that you're always on the forty-two laws of Maya. Make sure that you're always following the twelve general codes. Don't be a nuisance on nobody posts. You feel what I'm saying? And going under there and talking trash or or gossiping. If it's something that you need to say, contact that person. Let's handle it. Contact a minister, contact chief. These lines are open, but we need to be upstanding civilized men and women. I yield my time and I see uh Minister Yogi.
Yeah, that's great, brother. Um, I was gonna touch touch on those last two parts too, like. Forty-two laws of Maya, like you, you know when somebody's violating, you know, moral codes and so. I need to increase our awareness and, you know, be wise of who you who you're interacting with, you know what I mean? If we look at all of our great leaders, Dr. Khalid, Mohammed, Honorable Elijah Mohammed, Malcolm X. You know, it wasn't just like, you know, yes, the FBI had participation in any, but. Mostly downfall came from gossip, slander, dealing with um. Women, you know, may have been violating moral codes and so we need to hold our people accountable. You know, if you see someone. Violating any of these moral codes, you need to voice that to the N G S. This is what we have these. This is what we structured it for. Not only that, y'all need to be on that well side and. Make you s- yourself aware of who's on the Aboriginal Most Wanted list. Some of y'all still doing business with these people and they're on the list. What are you doing?
What are you doing?
You know what I mean? It's no excuse. Innocence of the law is no excuse.
Facts.
So, you know, I mean, and hold people accountable. I, you know, I mean, that that's the. The big important part for me, you know, hold people accountable. And reach out to them, you know what I mean? It's easy for us to complain about a person voicing something online, but if you don't reach out to them, you know what I mean? And see why, you know, come to conclusion, investigation work, you you don't know. You know what I mean? You just talking at that point. Yes, this is the Aboriginal Most Wanted list. You see the people on there. You see the people creating smear campaigns, slander and things against our tribe. You know what I mean? And we got to live out our general orders like Brother Balon said, you know what I mean? And once again, reach out to people when the. D O S uh event happened, I reached out to Ali, I called him. Asked him what was going on. Asked him why. You know what he told me? He said, but I told her I was just doing my job. He said, that's what you're supposed to do. Supposed to reach out, you're supposed to investigate, you're supposed to hold anybody accountable. Nobody's bigger than honor. Not no minister, not the chief, not any honor is honor and honor is based on natural law. And so as long as we continue to keep ourselves aware, live out our, live out our general orders. And like Sister Naima said, not avoid conflict either because it's necessary, you know what I mean? Who knows, we might not, you know, might not be on this road to have tribal bounty hunters, you know, establishment. Now, if we was just avoiding conflict, you know what I mean? In no society will you ever see kumbaya and just. Everything's just gonna be peaceful all the time and everything's just gonna be, you know, just flowing. We're gonna walk on the beach every day and. Walking something like, no, it's gonna be problems. It's gonna be conflict and I think it creates. You know, I'm saying a beautiful event, you know, where there's destruction, there's also liberation and, you know, creation too as well. A lot of these legislations and these bills and these things that came about, my my head net came about if there wasn't conflict. You know what I mean? So we gotta continue to do great work, hold everybody accountable. You know, if you gotta check your brother, see he violating the moral codes, yo, check him. You know what I mean? It's okay. See your sister violating moral codes, you gotta check them. You know what I mean? And of course, these things don't have to be publicized, you know, to our enemies cuz like, you know. Long said, which should be on T-shirt like Sister Naima said, you know, it's honor against everybody. So that's my, I yield my time. That's what I wanted to say.
Well said.
Any nationals out there, anything to add as far as conflict, any concerns? Um, that you have as far as handling conflict, um national to national, family, online, um this is your time.
Can I add one more thing before nationals go?
Yes, sir.
And let it go. Some of y'all still holding on to some of the conflict. You gotta let that shit go, like. We gotta move past it at some point, like let it, you gonna let that shit destroy your mind, like, look.
Seriously.
We gotta get our life going. We gotta get our wealth going and ain't no iron wealth. It is a we. And we got to move past all of the bullshit that is occurring, you know what I mean? Alright, thank you.
It's a weird wealth. That's hard as shit.
Yeah, I I'd like to add one thing to that. Uh, just to reiterate, you know, the opportunity that we have for one. To be amongst like-minded individuals, two, to exchange this level of intelligence and awareness. Uh, amongst each other. And for three, there should be nothing bigger than the opportunity that we have, like, you know. There shouldn't be um a beef with your sister or a beef with your brother. That should prevent you from still coming to the table to work together, to secure your families, your nation. Um, your your wealth and your economy. And so, you know, just, you know, to that point, uh again, you know, we we really do have to. Practice uh letting go and also just being um. Understanding, at least with hearing where our brother and our sister's coming from. You know, at least allow them to understand where you're coming from. Whatever point of contention or confliction that you may have with them because even in those moments, it becomes a learning opportunity for them. You know, there's there's certain experiences that we've all had and there's certain experiences that we all haven't had where common sense isn't common. And, you know, things of that nature. And so the point is, you know, we're we're all at different stages of our development. But once we, once we come together and we intersect and we butt heads. That gives every single one of us an opportunity to grow, you know what I'm saying, to realize. Uh, the error or the fault in some of our ways or to realize where, okay, we can evolve. At some point or where we can. Become more or less in some area of our perception in our interaction towards one another. That's all I had to add. I yield.
Thank you, brother. Um, we're gonna take, um, if we have any nationals here that want to add to this, we're gonna take a couple more comments. Before we finish on Minister Washak and do the open forum and close for today and get you all back to your families.
Peace, y'all. I have something to say. Hey, my name is Aaliyah. I'm here in Tampa, Region Three, and something that I would like to say. Is that, you know, we're all business owners and I just wanna remind us that we have to provide good customer service. So if you are shipping out orders, make sure you got all your order information out. Please communicate. There have been. I've had multiple situations where I've ordered and I love to support all nationals. Where there have been multiple delays and all that. So can we please step up our our entrepreneurship? Thank you.
So I know they wanna uh jump out there cuz sister, every two weeks when we in our meeting, it's something that comes up as far as like. Each ministry, um products coming from different health ministers, jurors. Not preparing documents the same way. All this stuff should be consistent. And no matter what jurors I go to, I should not have to have various different documents looking various different ways and getting different answers, right? Um, so these things go from the top to bottom, y'all. Let's make sure if you are being injured, you speak out. Please, reach out to any of us. Um, make sure you do have your documents so that we can be clear and concise. So that we can get a solution for you. But the sister is right. And that are some of the things that we need to hear from y'all so that we can make sure that we're getting not only in contact with them. But we have the ability to build um legislation now around these various different things. We need to start putting the people who are in good standing. Who are doctors and jurors and all these various different people in some type of database with their websites. Then make sure that everybody are selling the proper products and materials. We even talked about having an indigenous certification. Like you see for vegan certification, to make sure that if this company or this jurist or this person is in a uh indigenous certified person. You shouldn't be doing business with them, right? So all these various different things. So if you are national and you have an idea like the great sister just had, take a look at the referendum link. And you can choose what ministry that that idea may come under or impossible bill. And take those type of areas and put them in the comments there on that link. And that'll allow us the opportunity to get in contact with you and try to build and expand on some of these wonderful ideas that you all have.
I do wanna highlight for them, I guess it's a good chat, uh for them to check out one of the. Uh, Juror Society bills that they passed as far as for the jurists, um. That each jurist do have to be under a um. Somebody help me out, was it? Um, apprenticeship, you know, for a certain amount of time. Before they're actually on the official list. And so I wanted to put out just to highlight they bill cuz that's just one of the bills that's out there, you know. To ensure that people are performing at, you know, optimal levels. Cuz I know with the jurors, people be dealing with a lot of problems when it comes to documents and things of that nature.
Yes, sir. Great point, brother. In the chat, we have see the growth for life. The beefs we handle in August, we get back to work. Yes, sir. Um, I am back in the gym. So if you got a problem with me, it's gonna be a problem for you. But come see me in August, but I am back to the basics and I'm in the gym. Um, nothing is higher than my yacht purpose and sacred duty. Yes, sir. And Jai Al is holding himself a cannibal, y'all. He is gonna get those um shipments out to you. He gonna stop bullshit, alright? Signing up. Sister, mind you up and then we going straight to Minister uh Washak and we are going to call it a night.
Peace, family. Um, I just have an idea why I'm here with. Um, most of the head ministers of each ministry of the government. Um, so what I've noticed since I've had my son is that there have been some. Um, how do I, I'm looking for the word, but there's been some issues with. What paperwork is needed. To get social security number. Um, and what paperwork is needed. Oh, to just. Certain things dealing with children and interfacing with United States government and. Within their health institutions of at some point. Um, and with their government institution as far as social security numbers go. So I had the idea that maybe. We can start preparing, um, I know this would be Health Ministry and uh Birth Death and Forensics. Uh, Ministry and it always, they always overlap in some way. But that we can have like when we get on record that, hey, there's a baby on the way. Okay, we go through the the protocol with those parents and then when the baby arrives. We are actually putting together a packet for that family. To have, um, that will have instructions and also links to the YouTube videos. To actually give them step-by-step instructions of how to go about getting their uh social security numbers. And getting that passport and uh other documents that we need for their particular state. And have that, have someone in charge of updating the uh processes. Because sometimes the processes change per state. They add something else in there that, that they want done sometimes. And if we don't have that, it can be quite frustrating, um, going back and forth to the social security office, um, travel and things like that. So that's just the idea I had, uh, which kind of was, was one of my pain, um, of getting things for my son, documentation for him, um, being in the jurisdiction where we only have a, a couple of babies, um, in Hawa, Region Six. So like, it's just been, yeah, so that's, that's just an idea that I had that I wanted to bring to the table while we're all here, uh, maybe something that we can see what we can do about that.
Can I get in on that?
Yes, please, 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 and I'll go to follow.
Yeah, so that was, uh, actually an issue that I had as well, um, when we first nationalizing and had our two children. And that was a, a bill that I had, had written a draft, but hadn't completed it, uh, cuz it was more of a longer bill that kind of included having, um, almost like the, um, your health, healthcare plans, having like a birth care program, where you're like initiated into like, these are the documents, this is how you, you know, have a packet if you had a, um, a birth in a hospital, et cetera, so that was, that's, that's an area that we definitely need to focus on. I was just talking to, um, Kojo last week, did a consultation with him, I kinda did an audit on all of our documents for my family, and was looking at my two children, and they had different documents, right, one ages three, one is six, but the documents were different, so I was going through step-by-step with Kojo, like, okay, what is needed? And so the information that I was given, you know, three years ago was different than now, and not necessarily anybody at fault, but like you said, things, things are changing. So, I know you're interested in the birth ministry, so, you know, once we get you squared away, that's something that we can definitely, uh, get working on, cuz that's really important, keep that clear, it's okay for bringing that up.
Thank you.
So, what I'll add to this is research and dev- development is something that we're all discussing, um, to, from the top down within our ministries, that's gonna be important, um, right, even down for me with the technology, I'm interested with like, what's the best pumps out there, um, to be able to use and get that information down to the sisters, right? Um, what's safer than, what isn't, um, what are the reviews on these different type of topics? So, the, that's, a lot of that collaboration and research development, we're gonna have to do like internal audits, like the sister did, with our documents and see what we have in-house, bring them to the table, and just continue to build out. One other area I would like to see us do this in is when we're going to the store. We all need to be utilizing this tax exemption like it is hotcakes, brother, sister. And if they tell you no, don't get vexed, you saw me, my nigga, now let me talk to you like you my, my nigga, don't get vexed. Slow down, breathe, take note, right? Take note, take note before you take it personal, and then come back to the group. Let us know what areas aren't respecting your tax exemption, right, so that we can have a list in these areas. What I find is some people in certain jurisdictions are not having a problem at these same chains that I'm going to here in Maryland. And sometimes they ask, well, where else is this happening? Even my mayor, um, in one conversation I had with him about, um, accepting recognition of our tribe, he said, well, what other mayors have done it? I can only point to the social media that I've seen from Hawa, but us again, having these conversations and as we evolve, if we have access to these things, and we're keeping record in all our various jurisdictions, we'll be able to tap back into this information and go straight back to these stores, straight back to these managers, straight back to these mayors, and say, hey, this is what's happening in these other jurisdictions, they're already accepted and recognized, why don't you get on top of it? The last piece is, one time I was in the store, I, it actually happened multiple times, but the one time I could tell based off of the verbiage they use. When they went online to see if my tax exemption was gonna be accepted, cuz they didn't really know, instead of using the card, our cards can be swiped now, and if you got a new card from Kojo as well. But if they didn't do that, they just went online to check if we were gonna be accepted. What they found was, um, what's her name, Naninka's rendition of our tribe, not our tribe. And it said that the She Amaru Republic does not accept tax exemption, or does not get tax exemption. So you see how just like somebody smear campaign can even stop us from even getting our self-administer reparations just by the things that they're doing online, which is why it's even more important that we're out there promoting our things, our businesses, well, like the sister said, but also, um, in unison as a nation. So I wanted to make those couple points, because they're all connected to each other in that regard.
Representation matters.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, uh, Minister Washak, I keep adding on top of, you're a long wait. We got Minister Yogi, and then we gonna go straight to you, brother.
Oh yeah, my bad, but I just have one thing to add, uh, he brought us on, that's very important. We definitely need y'all online, you know what I'm saying? Promoting honor, making sure that you not using She Amaru Republic verbiage, because that is I O T, and that is part of a, a smear and division plan to, you know, get people to navigate over there versus to honor, so. You know, I say, y'all need to be hitting the gas pedal, you know, building up the audience, making sure the Aboriginal Republic of North America, She Amaru Government, name is getting out there, because if you go on YouTube, you type in Ali name, you could do it, you could type in Ali's name, her picture comes up, all on YouTube, all of the information, she amaru pub. That tells me like, we need more people faces online promoting their business, you know, everything you got from a, you know, uh, yeah, her face is all over, you type in Ali's name, her face is all over that joint, you type in honor, that comes up, so we need y'all promoting it, you know, very heavily, aggressively, you know what I mean? And then also, we need to get out, you know, sister, my, my sister Ma, who's seven and dies, brought up a great point, you know, I say, ideas, you know, we gotta get out the, the caveman, uh, you know, I'm saying, we gotta be able to be innovative, you know, I say, there's a lot of technology out here that we can get things done. For the jurors who don't know, Brother Kojo, he got a program out that does the nationality papers, you know, I'm saying, automatically through A I, you know, I'm saying, y'all can subscribe to that program, that way everybody's in alignment, you know, I mean, the subscription is not that much, you know, I say, subscribe, so everybody's paper is in alignment. We need to do it for everything else, and it shows the importance of also why we need y'all to be reaching out to us to get on these committees, that way, you know, I'm saying, we could work in all of these programs and things of that nature, so we can innovate, evolve, and be nostalgic where we need nostalgia, or be innovative where we need innovation at, you know what I mean? But we need y'all on the committee, you know what I mean, we need y'all participating in your local jurisdiction. I mean, I'm saying, it's only ten people officially on the honor juris list, that's on the honor government will site. We need more people getting out there, making sure you getting your apprentice shifts, you know, as the bill says, so we get more jurors out there, that way y'all can also start, you know, I'm saying, facilitating, participating in local jurisdiction, getting things like the overall state tax exemption, that way, if we got problems with the car, alright, look, use the, uh, governing body like, you know, we're getting ready to do in Hawaii, we just complete Oklahoma, we can do it, Maryland, Atlanta, and, you know, reach out, create a group economic plan to buy economic consultation. It don't have to be an individual thing, you know what I mean, I understand it costs, it costs most definitely, but if we all come together, you know, if it's five hundred dollars, that's five people, but if it's seven families, we could get the price down even lower, just to get the consultation, so we could do the thing, we just gotta stay more unity, you know what I mean? And not just unity, just getting on here talking, I mean, unity with the money, unity with the ideas, unity with the knowledge, unity with the programs and everything, you know what I mean, make it easier for all of us.
Alright, thank you, good minister, so that concludes our conflict session of tonight. Again, make sure you get in contact with the Juror Society, Juror Society, or your main jurors that got you into the tribe. Get in touch with any of the ministers, depending on what the specific issue is, um, and be on the lookout for any updates. We are gonna close out with Minister, um, Washak, and then we're gonna have open forum for you all to let us know any events that are coming down the pipeline, um, or any business opportunities that you have in your indigenous contracting businesses. Minister Washak, you up?
Alright, peace, peace. Um, so sorry, I was kinda in and out, in and out during all that time, but are we just kinda just giving a quick review over the bills, and then whatever we have going on with our committees?
Yes, sir, we have seven minutes to go over either or.
Okay, cool. Um, so I kinda hit at some of them, um, cuz some of them have more relevance than others, as of right now. I'll start with the one that's right there, uh, the National Cultural Heritage Act. Um, so this act was established to, um, establish things like national instruments, um, uh, the creation of, or the will be creation of a national anthem, um, and things of that nature that'll, uh, strengthen us on a community level when it comes to, uh, music and, and art. Um, so one of the things I do have coming up is, uh, part dissertation on, um, music production and songwriting. Um, next, uh, cuz I, I'm, I'm a music teacher at, at a school, and so one of the courses that, um, um, involved in teaching next semester is music performance, not music performance, music production and songwriting, and so, uh, coursework will have to be, um, developed, so in addition to that, there'll be, um, side, side with, uh, like a dissertation in that lane as well. Um, so that's upcoming, um, in regards to this bill. Um, how it will play into like some of the programs that we will have coming up, is classes that could be online. Um, I wanted to do a, a drum class, um, but after I thought about it for a while, it's, it gotta be hard to do like an ensemble class online, um, with like delayed feedback and, and on Zoom and stuff like that, so. Uh, I'll reserve that for a later time, hopefully in the summer, um, like mid-August, not mid-August, right before, um, August or, uh, early July, um, where I can bring some drums down to either, uh, Atlanta, or, uh, I know Yashiahu was saying that he had access to a space out there in Tallahassee, um, or Tallahassee, or any place where, you know, there's a good amount of nationals. One, to help bring, uh, more people, I guess, or excitement, uh, en- entertainment to the, uh, to the summits, um, and so hopefully we can get enough people to join that and be able to be a part of that in person, um, so that can be, uh, a showcase at the summit. Um, that'll happen later in the summer. Um, and so, that's what's coming up with the, uh, National Cur- Cur- Cultural Heritage, Heritage Act, which is, uh, those drum ensemble, uh, classes that'll happen hopefully in the summertime, um, before August, and then, uh, uh, dissertation coming probably right before late July, uh, for the music production side. Um, so yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, I don't wanna be too long, and this is already about to be ten thirty, but this one, Aboriginal Sports Association Act, um, I'm glad the brothers all have good energy for this. So, um, we had, we had a good, uh, I would say a good outcome from the one, from the event we put on in the fall, I mean, in the, in the winter time, so, uh, uh, I know we were talking online about developing like, uh, policies and stuff like that, when it comes to like signing up to register and stuff like that, so hopefully, um, I can get in touch with Ali, and we can come, um, to some terms or some things by, uh, May, hopefully. And then I'm also, uh, I'll go to, I, I'm a part of a boxing gym here in North Charleston, and the guy was telling me where he like creates his belt set, so I got a little prototype that I'm working on for the Indigenous World Champion Belt, so. Who's ever on, on here wants to come take that, or, or, you know, be crowned that, you know, be on the lookout for that as well. Hopefully with the, uh, with the, uh, S O S funds that comes in from each position, uh, we can allocate funds to, uh, you know, developing that in a, in a real good way. Um, maybe having money set aside for a nice purse for the winners, um, to bring more excitement and, and more, uh, participation. And, uh, also with that, uh, cuz like I said, I, I, I coach track, and I'm a music teacher at one of these schools, and also I was talking with the boxing, uh, director at the, um, at the gym I go to, and I remember a conversation I was having with a guy that he said they had boxing in, uh, ROTC, uh, at some of the schools, so hopefully be able to bring some type of program like that in a high school, and then tie it into, you know, the health lane, uh, with, you know, products when it comes to, you know, NutriPlex, all that kinda stuff, you know, the things that we sell to promote our health, um, getting it to kids, getting it to, um, people in the communities to, you know, one, bring awareness around the sport, and two, you know, be, uh, as competitive as we can be in the sport while giving, you know, people like doctors and stuff like that, access to clients, and so trying to merge all those things together through like local community action and stuff, and, um, and, you know, building on a local level, um, and trying to integrate the stuff that we have, you know, with All About Nationals, who have expertise in all these different places, um, can start doing things on a more local level, um, from where they are. Um, so, yeah, I'm excited for that in the summertime, so if you wanna be a part of that, I mean, uh, hopefully we can have something done by May, um, so what you all, you'll know what you need to have ready, what you need to have prepared when it comes to, uh, signing up and being registered for that, so that should be exciting. Um, so that's the Aboriginal Sports Association. Also, uh, any, anybody who uh, wants to be a part of planning, like, some of the events for the summit, like tennis game, like, this is just, I, I was just advocating for boxing, cuz that was something I was doing on a regular. And, you know, like, like brother said, you know, we, we got our arguments as men, you know, we got a whole little ring that we can settle it inside of, you know, so I think, you know, a lot of people can participate in that. But if you, if you wanna be a part of, you know, oversight, or you, or you, uh, have experience in other sports, and you want that to be a sport at the summit, please, uh, reach out, and we can, you know, set some stuff up. And anybody who has stuff on the cultural side, um, I have stuff in my, in my committee, where we talk about, you know, uh, a chief of dance, a chief of, um, art, and chief of music and all that kinda stuff, so if you wanna be a part of those things, or you're interested in it, um, a lot of those positions are gonna be, um, for handling parts of the summit. Um, and so, getting people involved and having more hands on the summit, so it won't just be Ali, um, setting up stuff, it could be all of us kinda planning stuff together, and making the summit, um, a enjoyable experience. Alright, so that's the Aboriginal Sports Association Act, uh. Uh, the National Tongues Act, uh, that was an act, um, just to kinda briefly go over it, to establish like a secondary language officially of honor. Um, with that, we chose what's traditionally called Arabic, um. But, you know, as time go on, you know, hopefully we can get some linguistic stuff, um, done to make sure we, you know, we're speaking it properly, but that was the one that was chosen as like the, uh, lingua franca, what we would call it, like, the language we do business with. And, uh, my plan is with, you know, funds that come in to establish programs, um, in local jurisdictions where we have a person that's teaching, uh, those classes, or, you know, open to, um, you know, just hosting sessions where we can start learning, um, and, you know, that'll come later when it comes to like more education stuff, um, that we can put out. But, um, that's kinda like a long-term plan that we wanna start looking at now, so, you know, I just went ahead and drafted it, so we'll have something to kinda build on. Um, but that's my plan with that, was to have people in place in different areas that are willing to, you know, share their experience, share their, uh, uh, their knowledge of it, and, and share with the, uh, officials, um, cuz I, I think it'd be a good idea that it kinda starts head down, we can start doing, uh, a lot of administrative processes, you know, learning the language, tying ourselves back to, you know, who we were, cuz at the end of the day, we're Aboriginal Americans with Morse descent, so that's a part of our heritage that, you know, I think it'd be good to kinda resurrect and also, um, have a good relationship with, you know, nation is, or, you know, people who identify with that, um, that heritage as well. Uh, so you can scroll down. I can't scroll down, so. Uh, the National Voter Registration and Civic Responsibility Act. Uh, in short, this bill was proposed and passed with the idea of, uh, you know, same thing that happened to Trump, you know, people with a lot of money being able to influence elections. Um, and so just making sure there's protocol in place, whether there's any type of, uh, intrusion or any type of, um, invasion on any scale, there's protocols in place that, you know, we've set up that can be here from now until, you know, all of us leave here, where it's basic principles that you need to do to vote, things that you need to have on record to make sure you're in a, uh, good mind, good spirit, like Yogi said, you know, we gotta make sure we're, uh, watching, not watching, but, uh, monitoring the health and the psychology of the, of the officials, where you also need to have some, some type of. of the officials, where you also need to have some s- some type of uh monitoring when it comes to, you know, people voting, who they want to rule them, not rule them, but uh words right now. But you you get what I'm saying. Uh, empower to, you know, uh words. But uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So making sure that, you know, we have something in place to, you know, make sure that that process is smooth, that process is protected, and that process is secured. Um, so there won't be just crazy problems happening with elections and and voting and stuff like that. So, um, that's simple. Said two minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, so, okay, this last one. Alright, so this last one was uh a bill that hasn't been um set in in legislation yet. Um, I sent it earlier this year with a thought that I had, so I just wanted to kinda throw the idea out there while I already had it in my head. And this one basically is, there was some commentary on this from the NJS that I got. Um, so I have a redraft of this that takes some of those in consideration. Um, some of that is already here, but I'm just gonna kinda skim through it and then once legislation comes, this is gonna be a a redraft of this. But this kinda gives the basics of what I was kinda envisioning when it comes to creating some type of system where national investment fund, crypto investment fund, where national can nationals can pay any amount of money into or contribute into. Um, and in short, there's four analysts that selected by the officials and by the chief executive um that run the the fund. These analysts uh take the take the funds from nationals who have um contributed, viewed it into it. They invest the fund as they choose, as they see fit. I also, uh, when you look at the the ministries involved, I have the Cosmo- cosmology um department involved as well, like he was saying earlier, being able to predict or attempt to predict certain times when it's good to invest, it's good to, you know, trade and stuff like that. And so selecting people who have expertise in those fields and the whole idea is, you know, kinda like a wealth dis- redistribution kinda system where people get paid, one, they're getting paid from doing this um based off of their performance, you know, once money start coming in, they take a cut. The nationals who contributed, they receive some type of return. And then ultimately, you know, if this starts to, you know, give us enough uh resource, we want to also set aside funds um annually or something like that that might be able to help nationals in need. Or, you know, elderly people who are nationals and stuff like that, where there's like a small like social security fund in a sense. Um, but that's that's further down the line, I guess, when it comes to, you know, how how big can we make this, you know, this investment, just based off of analysts who who understand the the market, being able to trade it and just everybody's contributions. Um, and and that wealth just like kinda moving around like that. Um, so yeah. That's the uh, and it talks about, you know, they can choose any type of crypto that they uh seem deemed fit. Uh, one counterargument, I think, I don't know if it was a counterargument or not, but I think uh Chief was saying that uh this, we should have a dissertation first before we set up a a a coin. So just to clarify, and I think this was kinda brought up in the NJS uh com- commentary as well, but it in my mind, I'm not envisioning at first, it 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 kinda looked like it was, it seemed that it was creating a coin, but I was, I guess the way I worded it, that part isn't necessarily applicable yet or in the process of me thinking about it, you know, kinda taking fruition yet. It's just creating a system where uh we're just calling it a coin, but it's actually an investment fund. Um, and the coin symbol is just more so symbolic or, you know, uh, yeah, more so symbolic. But um yeah, it's an investment fund. And then the name of the investments or the invest, the analysts would be the power tone. So those four representing those cosmological um um references and, you know, doing the work of, you know, the people bringing them um into out of property, you know, into a a more secured um financial uh status. And it's something that everybody can pitch into easily um and make happen. Yeah. So that's, that's all my time.
Alright, thank you, good brother, for being able to get comfortable and be able to present for the people. Wonderful job. Um, I was going to, my hand was raised to uh bring up the questions that were sent over from NJS. Once you brought up Zakot, so I'm glad you already addressed those, so um I won't bring those to the table. A wonderful job doing that. I will add that we had a brother here in Maryland who was a part of the IPA, who is um from El Salvador. One thing is he's good with translation of Spanish and he's already a hit to like the history of like Mayan culture. That's what like made him interested of this. He also went to school with them at high school, grew up in one of the neighborhoods we came up in as well. But the other thing is El Salvador utilized the same type of strategy, a coin fund, to pretty much overturn the econ- economy of their whole country. And now they buying into everything, real estate, um giving people, government officials more bread. Um, they looking into electronic cars, I mean, all type of stuff. But essentially they were able to build out the money by doing somewhat of what you're talking about. And he's been like sending a lot of like the case studies to us to read over, and he's back and forth from there. There's a whole nother conversation too around like um the cocoa there, the other different um natural products that are there as well that we need to be talking with him to try to get that stuff over here. So um I wanna get you his number so you can kinda talk to him about some of those various different topics. The last thing is, I also would like to see us to do some other things while we down there, like um maybe like a dodgeball or a kickball type of situation, maybe softball. I would like to see, um, if y'all see the Jamaicans, the Jamaicans do like an old head race. And like, we could do that, like all our old, and we old heads, I'm talking with us, you know, we could race. Or anybody older, don't get Chief started, cause he gonna try to beat all of us. But that type of stuff, like, you know, a little bit more like field games, um while we down there would be a cool thing. And the last thing is bringing back up, we used to do something when I was a part of like PLM here in Baltimore, which is the Pan-African Liberation Movement, um where like the kids on a field day, we would like have various type of games. And they would get points and they would wear different colors. So it'd be a team of red, a team of green, and a team of black for the flag, right? And um they would have to do various things like we put a rope on the tallest tree we can find in Juro Park and they had to climb up the rope. The women, the little girls always win that, uh somehow, they always win the tree thing. And then it's like dodgeball, um, there's the ladder drill, and we make them do different things in the ladder drill. But we can also do stuff like when we went to Stone Mountain, like Art of War, like capture the flag. Uh, we can use your drums for like, you hear the drum beats, find the drum beat. And whatever team can find where the drum is, like different stuff like that we can implement as we continue to evolve. But just throwing those ideas on the record for you to meditate on.
Sure, for sure. I don't know who you calling old head, but I'm still running my miles under six minutes.
I mean, I'm I I'm pretty good too, but the youngest called me unk. And it it gives me like they not saying like I'm cool, like we used to call the unks like the old heads back in the day. They talked to me like I'm I'm older.
Yeah, yeah, they call they call me, calling people unk, anybody over thirty, they call them unk.
Yeah, it's crazy. I I don't know if I should check them, shake them up a little.
You know, they 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 from a new generation, they daddies ain't nothing but thirty-five years old and they sixteen, so. They ain't got a real uncle, well, you know.
Yeah, it is crazy. We got any other questions for uh Minister Washak as far as his bills or just his ministry as a whole?
Yeah, I wanted to comment on the the bills that you proposed or were speaking about.
Yes, sir.
Um, well firstly, I I definitely remember my first time being called unk in LA Fitness and it definitely shook me up. But um in terms of like the the coin you mentioned, it's it's crazy how things line up because one thing I've um been interested in researching and this could potentially be a um dissertation topic I I could potentially do would be like a a coin, an Aboriginal coin. And one thing I thought about of like, how do we fund it would be um when nationals come in, maybe we can tie a portion of like dues or like a chunk of that uh those funds or or wherever we get the funds from um into the coin where you can essentially disperse it to a a new national. Another method I thought about was um if we're providing services, all of us, whether it's juror services, genealogy, uh genealogy services, any type of services that come from um Aboriginal university. Just like most crypto, you have to exchange your dollars for that coin to be able to utilize that coin. So we kinda reverse engineer that. If anybody externally wants a service from us, whether it's a a reading or a a health um product, they have to convert their dollar into our coin and then buy our product or service with that coin. So that builds the value of that coin over time. Um, this is just, you know, something I was thinking about and um researching like smart contracts and different things like that. So I think that kinda could align with the uh Zakot bill. And then the the second thing I wanted to comment on was, um, I'm big into basketball. I really enjoy playing ball. And it's something esoteric to me. Um, it almost aligns with like the the cards in a way. And I think there could be a great benefit in like coaching or uh developing a uh basketball coaching protocol for youth that again brings in cosmology, where you find the analogies, you find uh the different energies. Uh, maybe we have ways to explain uh the different planets where maybe the sun is, you know, when you have whoever has the ball in their hand. And um, you know, the moon could be like the team or the emotional aspects you manage while you're playing the game. But um not to be long-winded, you know, I I I kinda was taking notes on this today. Um, I I live in upstate New York, so it was a little sunny. So I got to, you know, be able to play some ball today. And um this idea just jumped in my head. Um, and I'm on a Jacka clubs today. So I think it's also super aligned that you're talking about like the sports and, you know, different things we can do and finding methods to make it indigenous and reforming and reimagining and reformatting a lot of the things that exist in our environment today. I think we have massive opportunity to reform them under the indigenous paradigm with a new lens. So uh those are just the two things I wanted to uh comment on or add.
For sure, for sure. I appreciate that, brother. Um, uh, only, yeah, that's that's good. That's a outstanding point from a or thought from a point of a coaching perspective. Um, I know Brother Mansa Musa out in Atlanta, he does, I think he does that full-time where he coaches uh Shabazz. Not Shabazz, associates, uh Sebastian Training. Um, I think that's what it is out of Atlanta. So um contacting that brother and think about that. Um, yeah, that sounds dope. Um, and like you said, just being able to tie that to different aspects. I know uh Brother Belong was talking about the track and field and stuff and uh the the team sports with the flag, you know, that's a brilliant point as well. Um, on the point of the coin, I I I remember having this that conversation with uh Minister Jaell a couple of years back when it comes to, you know, using Arna like saying, you know, if you wanna buy Mega Leaf, you know, you gotta buy it in in Arna Coin or whatever like that. Uh, and and that can be, I saw that being a um being something that could that the the initial investment fund, of course, you can have other ways you pull in the resources. But direct funding of it, I uh on the backend, I was thinking that that, you know, the the funds from the investment, you can automatically tie, since it's already, you know, nationally owned, uh, you can already tie in a percentage to develop the coin. In that sense, if we were to develop a coin, um but in this sense, you know, uh, we're talking about developing the system. And then you said, you know, you thought about creating a dissertation on that point, and I think that's what Ali was talking about. But I, what I was gonna argue is that who who's ever put in the position as an analyst, those should be the ones that's required to do the dissertation. Um, to one, have standing as a or or keep standing as an analyst. And then those are the people, you know, with the expertise and stuff like that. And, you know, they, you know, get together, study together, do all that kinda stuff. But I was, I was uh more so trying to create the system and then stuff like that will come into the requirements. Um, part of the job title or description or the things you have to do once be, or once selected for this position. Um, so yeah.
If I can add on top to that real quick, I too wanted to take a look at like cryptocurrency as far as like um legislation, things of that nature, but instead, since the brother already put a bill, what I would like to do was do the think tanks and bring some people into the space where we can just focus on the research development side of it. So to, he already really spoke to the major points about like the dissertation and things of that nature. So I I think on this end, um, Brother Basir, in the think tank, maybe what we can look at is start building up that research, some of the things that you're talking about and the concepts, cause a lot of what you all spoke, a- all of us thought about like services and how we can get it off with the coin, the Aboriginal unit, like this has been going through a lot in our minds. So I think it'd be good for us to kinda put the research together and also proof of concept. Um, people who have the actual experience in utilizing coins, using utilizing the markets. We need to start putting some money into it in those spaces ourselves and getting the proof of concepts up so that when we all ready to start moving it as a tribe, choosing people in the positions, et cetera, we kinda already got a base of like understanding by also like a group of people who have the know-how and also the proofs that we can actually do these things as well. So I wanna just, you know, invite you all to kinda that space. We had a lot of good information there, so um I have not sent out the video yet, cause I'm still editing it out. But I will have that out within the next few days. So um I'll make sure I get it to you, Ashak and Basir as well. But the next one, I'mma finish with the schedule as well, so I'll let y'all know what the next one is. But great points, fellas. Uh, one last comment on for the brother before we close out, if we have one. Cause we working on eleven o'clock.
I got one last point to add on the ministries. Uh, part of my challenge card is a five a club, so my my plans are always changing. So, once, once I got, you know, the track schedule, everything, which is so like still trying to find in space to even sit down and do all that. So we'll we'll be resuming those uh those sessions, uh, hopefully by before April, like one of the last weeks in April. And then carry out a bi-monthly um schedule from that. So I'll be on the lookout for uh communication about that.
Yes, sir. Uh, Minister Jaell, can we go to the agenda real quick? Alright, family. So um we are gonna go ahead and close out. Uh, my last few points I wanna bring to attention is that we, I forgot to bring up that uh Minister Yashiahu was able to go ahead and get us set up with our entity for the Ministerial Congress Treasury. So we are now ready to start getting some donations. Um, we are now ready to start trying to take in some mon- money and build out our government and and be in alignment to be able to take some money in, whether it's from the situation with Chief with the BIA or also just building out um specific ministries within our actual government so that we can start doing things like branding out T-shirts, selling the books that Chiefs have, making our own collaboration and making books, um, things of that nature. So the business is getting started, y'all. We now officially have the entity. The entity is a Jack of Diamonds. Um, so we are ex- expecting great abundance to come our way. Um, and those are the different type of things that we're getting done, so it was important to bring that up. So if you have any um help or assistance or any advice you wanna give us in that regard, ideas that you think that we need to be branding and selling, um, the tribe is like an NFL team. People will kill um at a Raiders game versus the Forty Niners. People will kill for a Ravens or Steelers game. We wanna make our branding of our nation the same way. And um we are now in alignment to do so, and our website is actually up as well, arnaMC.org. However, we're still adding the pictures and things of that nature to that, so we'll make sure we'll put that in the Facebook uh once it is clean and pristine, um so that you all can be able to go and look at these beautiful brothers and sisters online and be able to get in contact with them for some of the services we provide as ministers. Um, lastly, make sure that if you are um a brother and sister within the tribe, you are signing up for uh rec- recitation for the DOS and SOS. Um, right now, uh, we need to build up our internal systems and we have positions within those actual areas as well that we need you all to sign up for. So um please, uh, go ahead and sign up for recitation so that you can get into the SOS and the DOS and be able to join the tribe in that area. Make sure that we're completing our monthly fast and also um doing our monthly workouts if we are um well in. Make sure that we're completing our monthly fast and also um doing our monthly workouts if we are um well enabled. Uh Minister Jael will be doing accountability checks, y'all, please, don't be upset, we ain't checking on you to send you to jail, we ain't even got a jail. We checking on you like brothers and sisters, it's that simple, you know. Uh anytime you get a call from anybody or check in like that, it's nothing that deep, we just account, being accountable for each other and please do the same for us. Um so look out for those updates and those regards. And um I believe that is it, again, I have side tech committee meeting coming up on the sixteenth. Um also, we have the solar think tank on the thirtieth of March. And we also have another side tech meeting on the thirteenth of April. And then we are gonna go with the AI Think Tank on the twenty-seventh of April. And then on uh May eleventh, we're coming back around with another think tank on cryptocurrency. So uh those are my final dates, I'm gonna open up the floor for a, open forum for any nationals or any ministers who have any upcoming. Um dates or events that they want to share for the record, we're gonna do the preamble and then we're gone for the night.
I guess I just announced the two honor events coming up, the uh birth conference. Uh coming up April twelfth uh through the thirteenth, uh then the powwow in Dallas, Texas. Coming up in um April uh eighteenth through the twentieth, um I don't know if there was any other national events.
I have a event coming up here on March the twenty-second in Galveston, Texas. Uh me and Dr. Tua will be there, uh uh also with Brother Timmy. Um at the McGuara Gant Recreation Center. Um educating the indigenous community about uh ways that they can incorporate uh different health habits uh in their day-to-day life. So, yep, uh we welcome everybody who's in the area who wants to come out and join us, uh to just come on out. It's a tribal thing, so, yeah.
He said March twenty-second, right?
March twenty-second, Galveston, Texas, yeah.
Alrighty, alright.
Much love to y'all out there too, man, we all gotta get like a wab, y'all, y'all shining, we trying to shine like, y'all, great work out there.
Thank you.
Anybody else, events, uh services you want to um shout out? Isn't it sister, am I saying your name wrong, Aleah or Aleah? You a genealogist, right, sister?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations to the wonderful service and work that you're doing, being a pioneer in that area, anything you want to plug before we let you go?
Um just, here my post, I have a YouTube channel, uh my business is called Infinity Genealogy. I'm on Instagram, Facebook and YouTube, shout out to everyone who's already been supporting me. I do have a genealogy one-on-one course that is um more videos, self-paced and at the conclusion of that course, they will get a certificate. That's what I have, oh, thank you, yes, that's, that's it.
You, you been in uh doing the work so much, you done did the plug and ain't even subconstantly, subconstantly noticing, did you? Knocked it up. That's what's up, thank you for letting us know, anybody else got anything else going on out there? Alright, well, thank you for everybody's time and energy for being here with us today. Um it is very appreciative and we are, thank you for, we are very appreciative and thank you for your participation. Um be on the lookout for the replay, uh please follow us on Honor Ministerial Congress on YouTube and also on Instagram. To see clips of these and also the full replay on YouTube and those of you who emailed that, that had been shared with me. I will make sure that I will send the replay, also those who filled out the Ministerial Congress um interest form. I will send it to those emails as well. But uh let's go ahead and close out with the preamble, um so that we can get you all back to your families and we are gonna be done for tonight. Uh hearts and mind clear? We the people of the Aboriginal Republic of North America, asserting our natural Aboriginal rights as the oldest recorded Aboriginal indigenous people of the Americas. Consisting of an Aboriginal union of indigenous peoples living in accord with natural law, the law of our ancestors. Do hereby recognize all nationals of the Aboriginal Republic of North America as a unified community. Establish our divine right to self-rule, a common defense of our nation, a complete unified will for progress and prosperity by and for our people. Establishing justice by way of natural law and equality and complete autonomy as a nation. One nationality, one aim, one destiny. Peace and power, y'all, have a good night.
Peace, everybody, bye-bye.
Peace, family.
Peace, family.
Peace, family.